Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's meeting, Brookings County City Planning Joint Meeting here tonight. And we'll go by and call this meeting to order for the joint work session. And we'll start out with the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion? Thank you, Mr. Bartley, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. All in favor? Those opposed?
On the city side, entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Second, all in favor? All opposed?
All right, so Agenda Item Number Three, Discussion and Review on Updating the Joint Jurisdictional Zoning Ordinance Draft with First District. So you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Good evening again. I'm Luke. I was here last time. I talked a long time. The office sent someone else here with me to make sure that I don't-
Can I interrupt for just one second?
Yeah, go ahead.
We missed the approval of the minutes here.
Oh, well, fine. I'll save all those witty comments.
It's really exciting stuff. The approval of the minutes, I'll make a motion to approve on the city side. All in favor? Are we good?
You better do them.
We do need to do the county side again? Okay. All right, so Agenda Item Number Two, Approval of the Minutes.
Show move.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. And a second? Thank you, Mr. Bartley. All right, so now, I believe, oh, all in favor, excuse me? And those opposed? All right, now, I believe, we're on Agenda Item Number Three.
All right. So, we are on the, we're meeting for the second time now, discussing joint jurisdiction zoning, the update to the joint jurisdiction zoning ordinance, as you're aware, that's why we're here, all sitting together, to review this. For those of you who weren't here last time, I am Luke Muller. I work with First District Association Local Governments. I'm a senior planner there. Been there for better part of a decade, a little over that. And Peyton Schafers is here. She recently started in our office. She's been here for the better part of a week. And she's here to poke me if I go on too long here today. What we've done, the last time we talked, and I'm just going to go into here, last time we talked, I gave a basic overview, just kind of give you an idea of what the subcommittees have been up to, how they went about their process, and ultimately, what the net result was. And really introduced the document of the joint jurisdiction ordinance, talked about how we're going to go through this, which is not going to be a line-by-line review. I'm hoping you'll do that kind of on your own, as you deem fit. But more going to talk about things topically. And there are some topics that changed enough to the point that we need to make sure that you're aware of, and if you're okay with it as a planning commissions. And there are some others that may have changed some, that I do think you still want to make sure and go through the whole thing on your own. And if there's anything that you look at that you feel like we haven't gone over, go ahead and shout it out, and we'll make sure that we go through it still, or answer any questions that are. So today, I don't plan on digging into the text unless we need to, to go into it. But today, what we're going to go through is, we'll talk about the joint jurisdiction area, just the definition of that area, what it is, make sure you're comfortable with that as both the planning commissions, as to where that area is going to be. Then we will talk about the administrative process, including the Joint Board of Adjustment that is new into there, and have you talk through that, make sure you're comfortable with that. And then, lastly, assuming there's still time, we'll talk about the agricultural district generally, just the list of uses and area regulations, things like that. We're not going to get into regulations for each individual use, because I think that those will come kind of at large at specific meetings, but just want to make sure you're comfortable with how that's laid out. And then also, we'll finish with when we're going to meet, of course, at the end. Want to get into the process. We had at the previous meeting, I laid out kind of a timeline or a proposed idea as far as how to do that, kind of put the pencil to paper and figuring things out, and wanted to give you, again, a little more detail about where some of this information is on this slide here, so you can take that with you to have an idea as to what we're going to be doing as we come up here in order. And the main thing that I wanted to point out there is that I switched the aquifer protection district and moved that up in the order to where I'd plan on doing that at the next meeting, and talking about that. And then going into the specific uses, concentrate animal feeding operations, residences on small acreages, and gravel pits and mining. It's kind of in that order, as far as just that information. I also think we'll probably, if we've got more time, we'll probably talk about the existing farmstead exemption, which is kind of a new concept, new term, same concept you've had. But that's what we'll be doing. So, that talks about the process that we'll plan on going as we go forward. I'm going to start now, and just go in and go ahead and show this map. Peyton passed out the joint jurisdiction map. The yellow boundary on that map, the yellow boundary on that map is what you currently exercise as a joint jurisdiction area. That's where this joint jurisdiction area is used today on your 1980 ordinance. It's been updated a couple of times. After the work that was done with the subcommittee, excuse me, the area in the green, with the green outline and the green, whatever, shading, we'll say, is what was proposed to be the new joint jurisdiction area. You can see it narrowed up a little bit on the east and, well, at least on the west, but did stretch a little bit farther to the north. And I'll tell you that the groups went together, split into groups, and talked through it on one, two, three, at least three meetings, if not four, to get through. There was about, there was easily eight hours of meetings into what got you to this, much less the amount of drawing into there. And in the end, it moved to the northeast a little bit, and then down to the south to verify the south interchange. So with that, I'm going to kind of back out. Is there, does anyone have any questions about why, where that is, or any issues with the idea that it's going too far, or not far enough, or why did we do X, Y, Z?
I am curious why the changes.
Okay. Coming in, working our way in from the west, as we look to the west, part of the reason for that was because of the requirement in state law that we have to abide by a line equidistant between Volgan and Brookings. And once the group looked at that, and we talked with the development department as well, realized that with all the floodplain that's on that west side, that pretty well realized that that's less likely to develop and not apt to do a ton of good for the city. As you go north, for those of you with the city, county, you're kind of left in the dark a little bit on this, the city's land use plan, if you're not familiar with it, and Mike, you could elaborate on that more if I need to, but the city's land use plan points to more growth farther to the north, but they've got to leapfrog the university in order to do so. So basically, in order to develop, they're going to have to go a half to, a half to a mile and a half to the north before they can even start, which is kind of the idea, as far as I'm aware, to going farther north, to expand that farther north. Did I pretty well capture that? Leanne, you were there, Mike and Mike?
That was a pretty fair summary of it. I think really what we looked at was some of the constraints into some of those areas, in particular to the west, and then going north with the university, and then any investments that would be made to the north to bring infrastructure in. You look at what the service area of those investments would be, and making sure that you kind of protect those investments by making sure there's adequate land available for development. And so that's kind of why the boundaries extend a little bit further to the north. There's a nice ridgeline to the northwest that you can run infrastructure along the bottom of that ridgeline, and you can serve quite an area, I think, up to, can't remember if it was all the way up to almost 207th could be served with some of those utilities. So that's the reason why the boundary extends further north. And I think to the south, I think there was a desire to have some, I guess, at least have a seat at the table or some input if there were some development proposals proposed near that interchange on the south. And then to the east, for the most part, it stayed fairly consistent until you got a little bit further north, and that's kind of in that area, kind of near the landfill those boundaries extended. And I think it just kind of looked at making sure we had some good boundary lines as you start developing to the north and northeast, is looking at some of your road infrastructure that's available, and also looking at essentially high ground that development could occur
So that was a good question. That's where, how that came to be. The other thing that we did, and I'd be lying if I said I had the landscape memorized from that, but we did conduct a land use survey. I know I talked about that. We conducted a land use survey just to get a feel for are we, is there something out in that area that we're really going to restrict more so if we add that mile or what have you in those areas? And for the most part, we didn't really run into that in those areas that expanded out in the green. There were a few animals out there, but not at a size that would be larger than the ordinance is provided for at this point, at least. Oftentimes, when we'll do a project like this, if we've got a group in there, we did what we normally do. We'll take a big map on the table and draw where you think the line ought to be, and see how close it comes up. I'm not starting you from a blank sheet of paper, but if there's anything that you think ought to be shrunk or moved, let us know, and we'll talk it through. Otherwise, if you all feel pretty comfortable with it, I'm happy to move on.
Those wellheads were on the east. Were those all captured towards the east?
Not all of the well protection area is within the joint jurisdiction area, if I remember correctly. Do you remember for sure, Richard? Doesn't a small portion of it go out east of, northeast of there?
I believe so, yes, to the northeast and maybe northwest just a little bit.
A little bit east of the line, north of Highway 14, if I remember right. It captures most of it, but not all of it. Yeah.
On 216 and 475, you hit the section lines, just so, just those little bits, otherwise you're midsection on the lines.
We have, I was actually going to mention that, you'll notice as you look on that, that we went just right down the middle of the sections instead of on the lines. And that is primarily because we want the rules to be the same on both sides of the road, as the road exists today. So we went right down quarter lines instead of section lines. And so that is by design, and I was going to note that, that you see the line goes right across the center of the section all the way there. So that's why we did that, so that we weren't just stopping it on a road, one side gets this rule, the other side gets that. It's practice, I guess. Well, I'm going to take silence as ready for me to move on. I'm going to say this, if we go at this rate, we'll probably have a couple minutes at the end that we, if you think of some reason you need to move or change or something like that, go ahead and let me know. We can talk about it again. The other thing I wanted to point out is that if we do get done less than an hour, I'm not going to dream up another topic to talk about. I think that that'll be enough within that time. I just down here have the maps of the areas of jurisdiction. This map here is just the different zoning districts. I showed that the last time. It's on here, that are out there. You did rezone one of the parcels since then, but just shows that land use plan and the county's land use plan. All right, the next section that I'm going to bounce to is the, I did spell that, is the administrative rules. Now, that section is very small. That's not typical in a zoning ordinance. However, that is because of the fact that we basically just reference both respective zoning ordinance for the most part. If it is, if the property is zoned ag, then this ordinance is going to rule. However, the administrative process is going to be the same as what the county already has. And by administrative process, I mean the building permit process. I walk through the door, I go get my building permit, I go talk to who, the zoning officer, the administrative official, county development is who it is. I go get my building permit, the same things I would need for a building permit north of White are the same things I would need in the ag district in here. The timeframe that it would take is the same timeframe it's going to take here. All of that remains the same for anything within the ag district. So it just references those sections of the ordinance. There are also references within this section that say that if you're in a district other than that zone, other than the ag zone, you move over, you go to the city aisle, and you follow the city's ordinances. We don't have to reference this ordinance for any of that, unless it's in the wellhead protection area or the aquifer protection district. But they're, really, this ordinance is not relevant to them once they're in that area. They've basically elected to rezone their property to something that they get to follow the city's rules, city's process, city's permitting process. And in that, that also goes down to board of adjustment decisions as well. If they're within that, those areas that are zoned something other than ag, and they need a variance or a conditional use permit, they follow the city's process, they follow the city's ordinance, whatever that process is. If they're within the joint jurisdiction ag area, then it, that, and they need a variance or a conditional use permit, it would then go to, not the county's board of adjustment under this proposal, but it would go to a joint jurisdiction board of adjustment, in which I had incorrectly noted there were six members last time. There are not six members, there were five. And it'll have one county commissioner, two planning commission members from the county, one city planning commission member, and one city council member. And then each appoint their alternates. So, the process for getting your variance or your conditional use, meaning the notice, the rules for operating, having to have findings of fact, all of that would follow, would follow the county's rules as they set in, but it establishes the fact that it's going to be the, the board of adjustment, the joint board of adjustment is going to be hearing those. So, within that ordinance, that's basically the bulk of it. The other part is the amendment section, which is really just verbatim of state law and telling you how you have to get together in order to amend the zoning ordinance or have a rezoning. So I'm going to double back now, and I really want to, I want to start first of all, and I'm fairly confident, and I know the answer to this, but I just want to make sure, either through head nods or mm-hmm out of somebody, that you're still okay with the idea that by practice, it's always been the way of, if it's zoned something other than ag, they go to the city. If it's zoned ag, they come to the county. Are we still in agreement as a planning commissions that that makes the most sense? That make the most sense? All right. So that takes care of that question. Now let's go to the next question and the new part. Where do you sit on the idea of a joint board of adjustment, rather than kicking that over to the county's board of adjustment?
Well, and that's something I think we've, as a board, kind of discussed as well. So, what we were kind of referring to here is having an entirely new, different, shall we say, separate board, am I understanding that correctly? And again, just to, so we're all understanding, three county members, one of which is a county commissioner, and then two city members, one of which is a city councillor, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So then, that would be an entirely separate meeting for that applicant as well? So would there be two meetings for them to go to?
No, they wouldn't have to go to two meetings. It would just, this would be the new board for that area.
Entirely new board, okay.
So basically, not to simplify too much, but basically, since you're all here, you, this side of the room handles everything in yellow on here, this side of the room handles everything in white on here, and then everything in green is up to this new joint board. And so, logistically, there's probably going to be some challenges to trying to figure out how and when and where you're going to handle that separate meeting, but they don't have to come to both boards, they come to this new board that is made.
And like simply rounding up both sides of the, I guess, those five new people, you know, they're not going to be meeting regularly, regularly, it sounds like, as well?
As you'd have application, I'm sure, is when they'd come up.
I think the intent was is because you would have the city planning commission meeting and the county planning commission meeting right afterwards, that you have three of the five members here that you would just have to convince the elected officials to come on a Tuesday night, and we'd try and run these meetings between the city planning commission meeting and the county planning commission meeting. So it might be a little bit prior to the county planning commission meeting and after the city planning commission meeting. And if the elected officials can't make it, then one of the appointed alternates could sit on their behalf, and that would be, they would have the meeting and try and take care of that business, and if it's a variance or a conditional use, and decision would be made that evening, and it would be final. It wouldn't go forward to any other body.
Yes, I'd like to hear from our crew, what are we thinking on that? Having another-
I think that sounds good.
Basically, that meeting's going to be the time this one started now. The only difference is, some months, do you guys still run the same hours? Because daylight savings time, our meetings move from seven to eight o'clock start time. That's the only question there, is if we'd have to be here at 6:30 during that time and kill an hour and a half here, or what?
We would just have to coordinate those items, figure out a mutually beneficial time for everyone. We'll have to really set those quite a ways in advance so we can hit the publication requirements and everything. My guess is, you know, the city reps will have to just, you know, abide by whatever meeting time we set. And if it means that we're done, they maybe get to go home for an hour or two and maybe have to come back for a meeting of such. But, you know, I think when you make those time changes, your meetings typically start at eight, and if, you know, the joint board of adjustment can meet at eight, or even if it's 7:30, because it wouldn't require your full board to be present, but at least two of the county planning commission members, we just have to work through that, see what, you know, people's schedules, what's available.
I guess, excuse me, I think some of the intent of two county planning commission members and one city planning commission members, doesn't have to be the same commission member each meeting, you just got to find two members that are going to be available for that meeting. Preferably, you'd like somebody with some experience at those meetings rather than somebody that's green, but at the same time, that's, the appointment for the alternates needs to be established ahead of time.
Correct.
Obviously, the city council member and the county commissioner can be any one of those bodies, elected bodies. So I think we can work out the logistics of putting that together. I think the biggest thing is an advantage to the applicant, that they can get their hearing done in one meeting, and it's taken care of, and it's represented by both the city and the county when it happens. So we're looking at more of a streamlined process than, yes, it's an additional process on our side, but it's a little bit more streamlined, I think, on the applicant's side.
City Commission, any thoughts, questions, concerns? Mr. Pierce?
I have sat on the county commission for five years now, and during that whole time, I've also been on the city planning commission. And I think, and Bob could tell me if I'm right on that, during that five-year period, we had three joint planning commission meetings. And so it's not anticipated that this board would meet very often, because during that time, there would have been five. And that's why having people come off the planning commissions, so you already know what a permitted use is, what a variance is, and all of those kinds of things, would give people that were trained but don't have to make a regular monthly commitment for that board, because you would never be meeting that much.
So I guess I'm still kind of going back to what Mr. Ford had said, was like the meeting times and stuff like that. So if our meetings, our county meetings, let's say starts at 7:00 PM, this one would start at, we'll say, 6:30? And then the city meeting would be done on a Tuesday night at, I don't know, probably 6:30 by then, and-
It's going to vary by time of year, I mean-
Seems like logistics.
During the winter time, our meetings are usually pretty short. However, as you start to get closer to construction season, we maybe get a few more requests and more agenda items, they could take a little longer. But yeah, we've looked at, you know, try and at least run the meeting so that we at least, you know, would have at least 30 minutes for, depending on the number of requests, it could, you know, if for whatever reason, all of a sudden you get a number of requests, it could potentially delay the start of the regular county planning commission meeting. But we want to make sure that we're giving the applicants an opportunity to fully vet their request. But yeah, it's just a coordination thing, and if we have to potentially look at moving our meetings up, that's an option on the city side, but, you know, the other thing is, is it's kind of helped us, is we know we have a joint issue that needs to be discussed. It makes, keeps us on task during our regular meetings so that we take care of business in a timely manner, and complete our regular meetings so that we're, can start the joint meeting on time.
I would point out, there's another option in that, too, if you're starting your meeting at a certain time and you're down to one last item, but it's the time to start your joint meeting, and I'm sorry, I'm looking at you, city, on this, but there is an option if you're down to one last applicant, you could recess as the city planning commission, take up that county one, and then reconvene over there while they start this one, too, if you had to. Although that creates a bit of a nightmare on recording and things like that, but I think what we're getting at is there's a way. If there's a will, there's a way.
Yeah, I would agree with that. And I would come back to is, if you know that you've got to be done by a certain time, not that we don't want to rush items off the regular meeting, but you know in advance, so as a planning commission member, you know you're kind of potentially limited on time, and so you're reviewing the packet, and maybe you're asking some questions in advance of staff to get some of your questions answered in advance, so you don't have to take up as much time during the regular meeting. We still want to make sure that we provide everyone the due process, but there's ways to streamline the process a little bit, so that we make sure that we are done in time.
Okay. Well, my biggest concern for this board is making sure that we start on our right time. I don't want to get taken advantage of on some of those things, but whatever, whatever this crew thinks as well, now's the time to voice it.
I believe we can work its schedules out.
Okay. And I mean, maybe even taking it up in a different room or something like that, but if the agenda says start at, in our case, seven, I think that that should be the case.
I'll tell you, logistically, in-
Having another board.
In Kinden County, this is how the county runs it. They've got their separate, they've got a separate joint board of adjustment. It winds up running the same night as the county board of adjustment meeting, and the fact of the matter is, though, they've never done it differently. So that's where I'm getting at, that it's kind of apples and oranges, because you've been doing it a certain way for a lot of years. And so I just wanted, I was more concerned about the idea of having a separate board, because in Kinden County, we didn't know any better. You know, they'd never had anything different here. If it's okay having a separate, having a separate board, then at that point, then it's just a matter of working out meeting time, and I'm willing to bet that, I'm willing to bet that there's a way, like I said, as long as there's a will, there's a way.
Commissioner Farja, you have a question?
Yeah.
I understand that, you know, the representation would either change from month to month or at least be a small group, but would everyone on both of the commissions at least be aware of the package and the information that's being decided upon, so they could have some input if they chose to? so they could have some input if they chose to?
Yeah, so the way that it's written is that you would need to appoint the members. So you would need to name who's going to be on there, but we're also going to have multiple, uh, alternates. Going back to your question, would we have the ability, would we know, would we know ahead of time? Yeah, you're gonna have an agenda packet go out there the same way. Uh, and whoever are the appointed alternates are also going to get that agenda packet as well. And so, the alternates are definitely going to get it. And that is one thing you could work out amongst yourselves as well. If you want everybody on the board to get that as well, or at least to know, I know the county and I'm fairly confident the city does that too. You have it available online anyway. That's likely to be the case in that, in that instance anyway. They'll, all that information will be available online anyway, ahead of time. But yeah, I, I totally understand a board member not wanting to show up and say, "I wonder what board I sit on today." So you'll know ahead of time.
And Luke, just a quick comment, it would be the same deadline as we have now, the first meet, the first Tuesday, and the agenda deadline would be the second Tuesday, correct, for this board of adjustment?
Yes, it wouldn't, it wouldn't change from how you handle things at the county at this point. And that was more from a standpoint of just keeping their process the same, their deadlines the same, and not having to have, like I said, for the white area, have this deadline and the green area have this deadline. It's to keep it the same.
Oh, and another thing to just point out as well, um, because our side also gets busy, especially during, it seems like, the summer months. So, you know, if we got a busy side over here, and then we have this joint meeting, and then again, another busy side over here, well, I mean, we've had meetings that go till, you know, 1:00 AM, so...
Yeah.
It becomes very late, and hence why we're very cautious of our time, I guess.
The one thing that we could look at, 'cause nothing in the ordinance says we have to meet on the first Tuesday of the month, is if it looks like it's gonna be a scheduling issue, maybe we would look at picking another day, whether it be Monday or Thursday is probably the more preferential date. It's that, okay, it's just gonna be this, this joint board of adjustment meeting to handle one of those. If that's something that we need to explore, we certainly can. It's not dictated by ordinance, so there is a little bit of flexibility. We just wanna make sure that based upon, um, the county's current application deadlines and publication requirements that we comply with all of those and schedule the meeting accordingly.
I think, uh, and for what it's worth, for those of you with the city, after the last midnight meeting of the county, if I remember right, didn't you set up a backup day in which if you have an item starting after a certain time, you automatically kick it back to that day? It might be an instance where you wind up doing something similar, that you've got a backup date in which you do that. But anyway, it sounds like we are okay with the ordinance itself, it's more about working out logistics. So, I'll move on to the, uh, the ag district itself. Now, obviously, you're on, you're on the planning commission and board of adjustment. You're familiar with how a zoning ordinance is written and how districts are composed. And so, I'm really not going to show you page by page of that, but basically to point out, largely, I wanted to be able to show you what may or may not be different about it. And I'm not gonna get into taxonomy and just some modernization of language, but just some very specific things. The way that we got to the point that we did was, the group, the subcommittee reviewed uses that are in the existing joint jurisdiction ordinance that initiated back forty years ago and had been updated a few times from the existing county ordinance and from a proposed draft of the county's ag district. And looked at all of those and questioned, "Does this use make sense here? Does this use make sense here? Does this one?", and so on, all the way through that list. And should they be permitted, conditional, and so on? Went through that exercise and then conducted a land use survey to determine whether or not maybe we missed something out there that wasn't listed. And then had to ask the question, "Do we want to list that as a use?" So, in doing that, ultimately, what we came down to was a list of uses. And again, I don't expect you to have that list of uses memorized. I know at the last meeting, Stacy got the privilege of reading through a, a long list of, of uses in the zoning districts. Again, I don't expect anyone to have that memorized, but I just wanna point out things that got added or removed in some of those cases. In the cases of the permitted uses in the ag district, nothing got removed. But we moved institution farms and agricultural research facilities up into the permitted uses largely because if it's affiliated with SDSU, we really can't say no. So, no point in pretending that we're gonna have a conditional use permit over it. The signs and accessory uses, there was really no mention of those in the previous version. Uh, listed exceptions of shelter belts and existing farmstead exemptions into there. And I, I'm figuring we're gonna have to spend a little bit of time just explaining what an existing farmstead exemption is in the future. But, uh, bear with me, that moved up into there. And then, the seasonal retail stands where you sell the squash that you grow on your property, or, uh, maybe you've got a sweet corn stand or something like that. U-Pick operations, outdoor mazes, the sort of things that you'd have on a farm that you'd set up out there, moved as into conditional uses, or sorry, permitted uses. As well as home occupations. And by that, it's the home occupation you think of in town, which is the one in, in the house. In the county, we've also got ones that are operated out of sheds. Those ones out of sheds are called extended home occupations, and those stay as, uh, conditional uses. Moving down into conditional uses, we added a couple of uses. And some of these come from the proposed, uh, ag district for the county, uh, such as breweries, campgrounds, uh, commercial outdoor events in which you would need an outdoor venue in order to do so. Uh, farm experiences, ag tourism, uh, sorts of uses for farms, game lodge, meteorological towers, private wind towers and private solar panels, those would be the backyard ones, they're just for their own use. And then, uh, seasonal retail, like a fireworks stand, shooting ranges, because we've got a shooting range out in that area. Uh, spreading manure with irrigation would be a conditional use, a vet clinic, winery. And then lastly, a residence on a small acreage was a use added into there. Removed from that list, ultimately, institution for, farms moved up to be a permitted use. Manufactured homes, uh, occupied by a family member, farm worker, moved up and is one of those existing farmstead exemptions that are listed up there. It's moved into one of those, it's now considered that. Caretaker's residence was taken out because frankly, we don't have any. And, uh, home occupations was moved just because it's moved in to be a permitted use. So, is there anything that you feel like might be going on out in this joint jurisdiction area that you feel like should be listed in here, or shouldn't be listed? Or that you, you thought, "Hey, did, do we have that thing in there?" 'Cause I've got a pretty good handle on whether or not you do. Is there anything you can think of that we ought to have in there? Or any questions?
City Commission, any questions?
Anything on our end? It was pretty straightforward.
All right, I'll flip over to the, to the next page, and this'll be the last thing we'll talk about here. And this is just the area requirements. I know there's maybe a lot of, uh, watchful eyes on whether or not you were going to destroy the thirty-five acre rule in this area. No. The existing version, uh, requires a minimum thirty-five acres for houses. The proposed version requires thirty-five acres for houses. However, um, there are some exceptions within there, listed into there. And a few more, uh, than there were before, um, to have specifics listed. Uh, before, there was no lot area listed for anything below that wasn't a residence. Now, we listed an acre for most of those uses that aren't residences out there. Uh, there's a few differences in there, but listed a lot area for those, just so that you're not guessing what that lot area would be. Uh, front yard setback stayed the same, side yard setback stayed the same, rear yard setback stayed the same. The, uh, we established a minimum access spacing for, uh, rights of way for streets. So you've got a minimum access spacing within there, depending on the street itself. Required the right to farm covenant, which is required in the county of all residences. Someone moves out into the country, and I'm gonna paraphrase by saying, "It may be dusty, dirty, or smelly because people farm and work odd hours." And I acknowledge I'm moving out into that area. Pretty well captured that, Richard. That's basically what it says.
Yeah.
So, that, that's into there. It's required of everyone else in the county. And honestly, I think that that's been adopted by the county, in which the county's been requiring that even in that area in the past because it was adopted by the county commission as every house, not just, it was regardless. So, a couple of other points I just wanted to point out that may not have changed, how they changed. Uh, the height was really unchanged, lot coverage remained unchanged. Sewer requirements that were within there were actually duplicitous of some other language that we had in other sections and then state law. So that didn't carry over into the ag district section, but it's, it's covered in other sections. Uh, the, uh, the shelter belt setbacks remained unchanged. However, we added, uh, exemptions that the county is seeing, oftentimes seeing variances issued when they get okie-dokes from either a neighbor or the, uh, road authority. Uh, so, added into those. Uh, and then the last part is, um, the ability to decrease lot area. Some of you may, well, you may not remember because you don't see it all the time, uh, city board, but you had, you had the ability to decrease lot area on the basis of somebody living out there for a certain period of time, ahead of time. The county, uh, subcommittee, ag subcommittee and discussions have talked about moderate, uh, making small changes to that. That's captured, those changes are captured into those existing farmstead exemptions that I will go into, uh, probably at the end of next meeting or at the beginning of the following meeting. So, are there any questions about the sort of things you give variances to? 'Cause that's what this is. These are the sorts of things you'd expect requests for variances to. Looks pretty straightforward to me.
Good news.
I think once we found out the five acre rule, we're good, as long as we understand that.
So we'll do, with that, that's, that's good to know. It's not to say that, uh, I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to say that we've, you know, once we've talked about these things, we've moved past until we get back to, you know, more, uh, closer to a public hearing. If there is something that comes up, what I'd like you to do is, is feel free to, on the next slide or on the back slide, drop me an email or a phone call if you got a question about, you look at and go, "I don't see it the same way." Let me know, please. Okay, and I'll try and work through it with you. For next meeting, uh, unless someone tells me otherwise, I'm planning February fourth. And at the time you tell me to show up, that's when I'm coming. And we'll talk about Ocfa Protection District is, is, uh, my plan. And then, uh, if time allows, we'll talk existing farmsteads as well. So, that's all that I had planned. And, uh, here are names, here's us. If you wanna get ahold of us, okay? Anything for me?
Uh, six thirty again, for the next meeting?
As long as it works for you and your boards, that's fine for me.
I believe. Does it work for all of us? Okay?
City's side?
Alrighty.
Just like it. Well, thank you.
All right, so, uh, let's see here. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Davis, and a second? Thank you, Mr. Ford, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And, uh, and... We're adjourned.
Welcome to the Brookings County, uh, Zoning, um, Government Center here. And we're starting off, um, as, acting as Brookings County Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, I'm calling this meeting to order, um, at seven twenty-eight PM, immediately following the joint work section, session, excuse me. Um, we'll start off with agenda, or go to agenda item number two, I guess, approval of the minutes from the December second meeting, um, twenty nineteen, Brookings County Planning Commission and Brookings County Planning and Zoning Commission joint meeting, and the Brookings, excuse me, the December second, twenty nineteen, Brookings County Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting. So do I hear an approval?
So moved.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Ford, and a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. David, Davis, excuse me, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, agenda item number three. Items to be added to the agenda by commission members or staff. Hearing anything? None? None? Okay, I'm hearing none. Agenda item number four, invitation for citizens to schedule a time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. Time is limited to five minutes per person to address the board. Anyone wanting to speak during this agenda item, um, you must start prior to the meeting. So, anybody else from the, uh, from the audience that has something that's not on the agenda tonight? All right, seeing none. Agenda item number five, any conflicts of interest, disclosure of conflicts of interest, um, anything like that that we have for tonight?
I obviously will be recusing myself for my application.
Okay, so I believe that was agenda items number, what do we have? Nine and ten, okay? So, Mr. Davis will be recusing himself from agenda items number, uh, nine and ten. All right. All right, any other conflicts? Seeing none? Agenda item number six, the approval of tonight's agenda. Do I hear a motion?
So... Second.
All right, so we had a second, Mr. Nelson, um, or excuse me, a, a motion, there we go. And a second from Mr. McQ, thank you. And, agenda item number seven, election of officers for twenty twenty.
Would you like me to do that?
Um, yes, please.
This time, we'll open up for nominations of chairman for the planning commission for twenty twenty. Is there any nominations for chairman?
I'll nominate Camerley Ankleich.
All right, Mr. Davis, thank you.
Is there any other nominations? Any other nominations for chairman? In that case, I'll take a motion for nomination ceased and cast unanimous ballot for Camerley Ankleich for chairman of the twenty twenty Planning and Zoning Commission?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Kleinjohn, and a second, Mr. Bartley.
So you can take over for the vice chairman.
Okay, um, the next portion will be the election for, or excuse me, for, uh, um, vice chairperson. Um, do I hear any nominations for the vice chairperson?
I'll nominate Mike McQ.
Okay, Mr. Davis is nominating Mike, Mike McQ? Any other? All right, Mr. Bartley is seconding. Oh. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Nominations cease for unanimous ballot?
Need to move call for nominations to cease and cast unanimous ballot for Mike McQ for vice president? Motion by Bartley, second by...
I'll second that.
By Davis, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Madam Chair, that needs to be written down as vice chairperson, not vice president.
Vice chairperson, okay.
Thank you.
Yes, vice chairperson. All right, and the next portion of the meeting, um, we'll be acting as the Brookings County Planning and Zoning Commission. All right, um, so I will now call this meeting to order. And I would like to welcome those in, in attendance at tonight's meeting. The Brookings County Planning Commission is a nine-member commission whose function is to recommend approval or disapproval of land use plans, zoning ordinances, subdivision plaques, and amendments thereof to the Brookings County Commission. The commission makes its recommendation based upon the adopted comprehensive plan for the physical development of the unincorporated areas of Brookings County. for the physical development of the unincorporated areas of Brookings County. As a matter of policy, all motions are made in the positive. As a motion is approved and seconded, or after a motion is approved and seconded, it is open for debate. Those supporting the motion shall in turn give their reasons. Those opposing the emotion shall then offer their reasons. After everyone has given a chance to be heard, the commission shall recommend approval or disapproval based on the testimony and information presented. A simple majority vote of the quorum of members of the Planning and Zoning Board is in attendance is required to forward a recommendation. Okay? And agenda item number eight, consideration of plaits. So we have twenty twenty plat zero zero one, plat of lot eleven A in Cedar Point addition in government lot three of the northwest quarter of section twenty eight township one oh nine north radius fifty west of the fifth prime meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. And do we have a motion to hear this?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. McQ and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. And Richard, we'll hear your staff report, please.
Yes, twenty twenty plat zero zero one, Keith Rounds is vacating lot eleven in the Cedar Point addition and plating off lot eleven A for a property line adjustment. The lot is located on the northwest side of Lake Campbell and lot eleven was originally approved by this board on October first twenty nineteen, which was included in this report. Lot eleven was original for originally forty-four thousand five hundred and twenty-nine square feet and it has been reduced to thirty-six thousand forty-one square feet. The property line adjust- adjustment will give the adjoining unplatted la- lot unplatted future lot more square footage. And the lot exceeds the twenty thousand square foot requirement for the Lake Park District. And a plat meets our Brookings County subdivision and Lake Park meeting requirements. This is the new plat right here with the, this is where the property line was moved to now, it was coming down this way, which I'll show you in a minute here. Gives this unplatted lot right here more usable space right there with moving the the lot line. This is how originally was, it came down here to the point, this is posed ones going right here, takes this triangular way and gives more square footage to this, to this lot. This is a lot on a beacon map that shows the aerial picture of it, where it would be sitting on the plat, this is where it was, and this is the the new boundary line right here. And this is the aerial view of the complete lot before, as prior to what it was plotted, so this area right here is where it would be. And that's all that I have.
Alright. Okay, we'll start out by opening it up for the discussion with our board here. We'll call the um, applicant up here. Mr. Rounds?
Mr. Rounds is not here this evening, I'm representing the applicant.
Okay. Alright. Any thoughts on this from the board here? Shape of the lot is pretty unique, I guess we'll say, so, pretty straightforward. Hearing none, um, open it up to the public. Any thoughts on this one? Proponents, opponents, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. And back to the board, any other discussion from us? Alright, uh, Richard, please call a vote.
Bartley?
Aye.
McQ?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Kleinjohn?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Ericson?
Aye.
Jensen?
Yes.
And Delangewich?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Alright. Alright, now, um, we'll move on to the second portion of the meeting, Brookings County Board of Adjustments. The Board of Adjustment is a nine-member board which has the power to hear requests for variances, conditional uses, appeals, and special exceptions. The concurring vote of two-thirds of the attending members is necessary for approval of any action by the board. A nine-member board requires six votes and a six-member board requires six votes. In accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, we require a motion to approve a request before the request can be debated. As a member, as a matter of policy, all motions are made in the positive. The board, under specific powers granted it by the state, shall authorize variances from the zoning requirements where special conditions existing on the land will result in unnecessary hardship of the applicant. Financial disadvantage to the property owner shall not constitute proof of unnecessary hardship. Alright. Moving on to agenda item number nine. Um, and it looks like Mr. Davis has recused himself. So on to agenda item number nine, two zero two zero, uh, CU zero zero one, Thomas A. Davis has made an application, two zero two zero CU uh, zero zero one to the Brookings County Board of Adjustment for a conditional use. Article eleven, section eleven point zero one, A, Agricultural District, conditional use number four. Sand gravel or quarry operation, mineral exploration and extraction. The property is described as the east half of the northeast quarter, southwest quarter, northeast quarter, southeast quarter, northwest quarter of section four township one one zero north range fifty forty-eight west in the Alton Township. Alright, from board members, do I hear a motion?
Move approval.
Thank you, Mr. Bartley, and a second.
Yeah, a second.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. And Richard, your staff report, please.
Yes, twenty twenty CU zero zero one, Tom Davis has applied for conditional use number four for, number four for a sand gravel or quarry operation, mineral exploration and/or extraction to mine gravel on the above described real property. Tom Sturzinger from Taunton, Minnesota will be the mining and crushing operator. The operator's site plan, business plan, hours of operation, reclamation plan were included in this report. Road access will be to the west of the proposed mining area, mining and crushing operation across the pasture land that the applicant owns, to four hundred and eightieth avenue, which is an Alton Township road. The applicant and the operator have been in contact with the Alton and Sherman Townships regarding road agreements. Hours of the operation will be from six AM to six PM, Monday through Friday, and six AM to twelve PM on Saturday. As noted in the site plan, during the mining operation, there will be a berm constructed along the natural waterway to keep the soil and sediment from entering the creek, the waterway. The waterway is located at the very northwest corner of the proposed mining area. And it is in the floodplain there. The first occurrence of aquifer materials map shows that the proposed mining area to be in zone B with the presence of sand or gravel generally less than or equal to fifty feet below land surface. The gravel layer to be mined approximately twenty in feet in depth and mining will be done above the water table. Refueling of mining equipment will be done on the site. The onsite storage will have containment structure and will be located on the south side of the property as noted in the site map. The reclamation plan is to stockpile the topsoil. And once the mining is complete, the area, the topsoil will be placed back in the ground and seeded back down to pasture. East Dakota Water Development District has reviewed the application and the documents by the applicant and the mine operator. The applicant also has a conditional use, two twenty twenty CU zero zero two for conditional use number five A for rock crusher to process the mined gravel onsite. And the board will be hearing this tonight also. The zoning office has reviewed the above documents and made a site visit to the proposed locations. Public notices were published in the Brookings Register on December twenty fourth and thirty first, two thousand nineteen, and in the white Tri-City Star and Elkton Record on December nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, and January second, twenty twenty. Letters were sent to the joint landowners, the Alton and Sherman Township Chairman and Clerks. This is a conditional use application to for the mining. The site plan here, as I get it zoomed out. As we're posing, this is a quarter line right here, section line, proposed mining area. This is the creek going across the northwest corner, this is where the berm would be located. This is where the site would be for the fuel containment. There's the hours of operation. Be six AM to six PM, which I read Monday through Friday, six AM to twelve PM Saturday. Hall rail would be across the applicant's land to four hundred and eightieth avenue and either south to highway fourteen or north up to two hundred and eighth street, two hundred and seventh street, county road eight. And he was in contact with the townships. Refueling will have containment on the map and the earthen dam or berm would be approximately two hundred and fifty feet long to act as a silt fence along the, the waterway. Depth of the gravel is twenty feet, all mining will be done above the water table at this time. The reclamation will be stockpiled and then gravel removed and replaced back on the land and reseeded to pasture. Expected mining time would be thirty years. This is a beacon map of the proposed area. This L-shaped piece right here. This is the mine area right in this area. Four hundred and eighty-first avenue comes up here to it, it's a dead end road, it stops, road is vacated from here north. There's a trail path going down here to that, one access for that. The other way, way out would be across, they own this parcel hill over, over to four hundred and eightieth avenue. And over on either the highway fourteen or two hundred and eighth street. This is the same map, the red area shows a floodplain with the creek going there. This is where the road would come across the pasture then enter and exit here to four eightieth. This just shows Aquifer Materials Map in yellow where the area is zero to fifty foot in depth to sand or gravel right here in this area. This is just coming up four hundred, four hundred and eighty-first avenue up to the dead end here, you go into a pasture or you take a left right here down to the proposed mining area, which is this path right here going to the west. This is looking after you get in the pasture off to the west there. This is looking off to the northwest. And this is looking primarily north, northeast, or northwest, excuse me. There, and this is looking primarily east from the north on the east, very east side of the pasture right here, when you come come in that track and you turn right here and this is the pasture area, so. I have received comments that they, the board did receive, and I believe those people are here this evening. The board did receive those comments yesterday on that, so they, those applicants can speak for themselves this evening. And that's all that I have.
Alright, thank you, Richard. Um, alright. And we'll start out with the applicant, uh, Mr. Davis. And before that, I guess, um, some discussion from the board. Anything that we kind of want to discuss first? I think right now we're, go ahead, sir.
What provisions do we know that have been made for the roads? For the increased traffic?
Applicant will address those with the road agreement, that they've
They do have a road agreement in place?
I believe so, yes. Hold your comments, please, this is only for the board, you will be instructed at that time when you can speak.
Okay, so that's a question you want him to address?
And then dust control.
Dust control, so.
Yep, we'll let those applicant, I'll also have those addressed in the findings of facts.
Right. Anything else from our board? Alright, here nothing more, we'll, uh, hand it over to the applicant.
Yeah, Richard, if you could put the map up there of the, where it shows the watershed and the colored map, please? Okay. First of all, I'd like to address the board that the permit is going to be in three names. Deed holders on the land are Thomas A. Davis, Joe and Tina Davis Living Trust and South Dakota Holdings LLC, which is my brother Philip in Leighton, Utah. Uh, we're going to start mining about where the plat number starts there of about where that zero two is, the first two numbers of the plat number there and that. Let's see if I can make this work, but I don't know how it works. It's supposed to be red? Yeah, okay. We're going to start right in that area, right there, mining. I've already built, this past summer, I built a barbed wire fence basically where the, in the northwest corner where the the watershed aquifer color is the red color. Right, across here. Shaky tonight, but. So that won't be mined because the cattle tore the, or have been walking there, you know, for since the beginning of time basically, and, and the fence was starting to fall into the creek. So I moved the fence so that there's about oh, fifty to a hundred feet wide away from the creek there. And then from, from the barbed wire, where I, and the barbed wire fence on the north side up to about where we're going to start mining is where we're going to build an earthen berm. And that, there's a natural dip on the north side of the fence, between the north side of the fence and the creek to keep water, the water would have to go, you know, down through that and go back up to get into the creek. You actually stand, kind of stand on a rise like before water could get into the creek. What else? We're going to build, as Richard stated, uh, on the west end of the property. My mother owns that other L-shaped piece there in that half section. We're going to build a fence there on the south side of, of my mother's out to four hundred and eightieth avenue. That, um, and then on the north side there, it belongs to the Roland Hutterite Colony. And we'll have to stay away from whatever the setback is for that road, or we're, I, I told the Roland Colony today, we'll be negotiating or we will stop, you know, we got plenty of time to negotiate how far away from the fence they would like that road to be. We are going to use four hundred and eightieth as our way out, but uh, there were some developments this afternoon that happened with Sherman Township. Right there where that mark is is the Sherman Township line between Sherman Township and Alton Township line. Now, right there is a short hill with about a seven percent grade. Today, I'm, I have a, an agreement in place with uh, Sherman Township that we're going to cut that hill down to a four percent grade. And we're going to take eighty percent and all of the main uh, contractors hauling out of this proposed pit are going to have to go north to county road eight, which is a which is a mile and a half from where we're going to enter 480th Avenue. The other 20%, the reason, and let me step back and then if the other 20% I'm saying is going to go south and go some direction from the intersection of 480 and 209, just because there's going to be some local hauling, there's a possibility, you know, of the gravel for the township coming out of there and it's not going to make any sense economically to go all the way north and then come back down. I figured, you know, when the pit gets going, there might be 3,500 loads in a season hauled out of there, which would equate to 7,000 trucks in a, in a period, you know, during the construction season. So that's why I decided because of the safety for, and the rest of the people in the neighborhood to take 80% of the trucks to the north. And like I said, there's a possibility of 20% going to the south. And with 7,000 trucks, 20% is 1,400 loads of gravel to go south. Now, 1,400 loads might sound like a lot, but over a month's time, that's 175 loads in a month. And there's 22 working days in a month. That comes down to eight and a half loads a day to go south. Now, I've had inquiries about dust control, road maintenance. Yes, we're going to take care of the roads and keep them in better shape, or at least as good a shape as what they're in. We're going to pay for the dust control on all the residences. We're going to make that 480th Avenue, 35 miles an hour up to the county road to the north, and also all the way south to Highway 14. And that's going to be not just for gravel trucks. It needs to be all trucks to be fair. And I know, you know, the speed limit in the county is 35 miles an hour, but, or 55 on gravel roads, but 55 is too fast for a loaded gravel truck. Uh, we're going to, there's two inner, when you go south, there's two intersections on 480th Avenue between the gravel pit entrance and Highway 14 that are unmarked. They're going to have to be made into a four-way stop for safety purposes. Our plan is to utilize some social media that when we're going to be hauling, say somebody builds a house or something south of the gravel pit and they need eight or nine loads or something in one day, I'm going to put it, put out a text that states, you know, we're going to be hauling past there more than what we normally do. We've talked about getting an electronic display sign, not just a sign that says trucks hauling. They often tip over in the wind. And if we have a, an electric sign that we can turn on and off stating when, when we're going to be hauling on that road between there and south to Highway 14, you know, signs sometimes become passive, you know, you drive by them so many times, they're just there. And then if, if somebody want, you know, if somebody's going to have a funeral or, you know, a gathering after a funeral or, or a wedding or something like that, I encourage those people to let me know so we can stop hauling that way. I guess that's all I have for now. If somebody has got some questions, please speak up.
All right. Okay, any discussion from the board here? So it sounds like Mr. Davis has talked to some people about a lot of this. I think what we need to do, and I don't know if I'm speaking on behalf of the board, if this is correct, but we'd kind of like to hear some comments as well and then maybe discuss as well afterwards, so...
Could I ask if, if the operator of the pit would like to speak?
Sure.
Before, before you start to comment?
We want to hear from the applicant.
My name is Tom Sturzinger. As far as the haulage, I think that is the main concern with the mine site. We're going to be probably as diligent as we can to try and maintain and keep the road up to shape. If, if it does need to be taken care of, we can access blade almost immediately to take care of any needs. If it gets too soft, we will stop the hauling. Because that is one concern, because like last summer, it did get soft. We did pull trucks off the road just because it got too soft. And Dale Bowne's pit, we did close the mine site down for a short period because his road got soft. And it happens. But the pit is needed. Talking with Brian at the county, he was excited to hear that he'd have another source to open up. This last season, they sent out a bid and they tightened specs. Bose did not bid on it. I did not bid out of Dale's bit. And the only person that bid was my father, which lives, or has his mine site in the very corner of the county. So that did stress the county a little bit more so for the fact that they had to haul it from one side of the county to the other. And with as much material as they use, I don't know how much my father's going to give up to the county as well for the infrastructure of the roads. Same as Dale Bowne. He showed no interest as far as giving larger, larger quantities to the county or any other entities because of using and depleting his source, which I don't blame him for that either. He is a landowner, he can do what he wishes with his land. But we, the county needs, contractors need another source of material so they can keep the infrastructure alive in Brookings, the roads, housing, parking lots. It is a depleting source, so we need to keep finding new sources to keep our infrastructure alive. Thank you.
Thank you both. Why don't you have a seat here? And with that, we're going to open it up to the audience. And how this works is we start out with the proponents. So people who are in favor of this come up to the front and state your name and some of your comments, and we do limit those comments to five minutes a person. So if there are any proponents, come on up and state your name and your comments. Seeing none, I'm closing the public portion of the proponents. We'll move on to the public portion of the opponents. So same here, please come up, state your name and your comments. And again, you'll be, you'll be at five minutes and we will stop you when that happens.
My name's Mary Bowne. I had sent a letter yesterday that I know you had all received. I'm going to pretty much read from that verbatim, but I also want to add in just a few items. One, in regards to Mr. Davis's comments, I have a question regards to who's going to enforce that 35 miles per hour on those gravel roads, as well as the 80% to 20%. That'll be the 20% heading south out of that pit. No one will be able to monitor something like that. And this is where our concerns come in with this proposal. So first off, oh, and the other component too is it was mentioned by Sturzinger that he shut our pit down because the driveway was too soft. It was not him. We were the ones, we were the owners that told him we did not want any more trucks coming out of that pit because the road was too soft. So in regards to this proposal, if it is passed, this is my concerns with this proposal. I'm a mother of four children and I'm a farm wife. My children, three of them are here today and other neighbors often play outside. We use these gravel roads, all of us, for different purposes. My family uses it for biking, driving, running, and using it for farm purposes because we have family farms within two miles of this area. I have major concerns with this proposal due to various reasons. And I'm going to mention what these concerns are for myself and for my family. My first concern is the safety from not only my children, but also for my loved ones and also my neighbors. Anyone who has children who are outside playing, grandchildren, and anyone who may be on the roads doing what they would like to do. We have blind spots on the gravel roads. I just handed out a map to you. What you're seeing there is one of the proposed ways to get out of that pit is going to be going right past two of our family farms. The intersection that they're targeting is the highway that runs past Bushnell up to White. The problem with that intersection, it is a blind spot coming from the north and from the south. There are hills on both sides. There's a power plant on one corner. There is a gravel pit that has, is no longer in use on another corner. That is a drop off, a gradual drop off, but it's over 30 feet deep. And then we have two family farms, one on each of those corners. If something were to get hit on that corner, I don't know what would happen because there is so much going on there and the blind spots that are taking place there as well. And with those gravel trucks, they are going to be taking some wide turns getting in and out of that road. So my question is who's going to be held liable if someone is killed or someone's hurt terribly on one of these roads? What if property is destroyed? Who's responsible then for that as well? My second concern is how the roads are going to be destroyed with so much weight and speed. Who's going to maintain these roads? Mr. Davis said that he will maintain it and Mr. Sturzinger said he will as well. To me, that's going to be a full-time job. Just our mile and a half road with winter weather and such, as well as just typical agricultural usage. We have washboards all the time. We've got a lot of holes and things that have to be taken care of. And so it's, it's going to be a big job ahead. My third concern is that of dust. Many companies said that they use a dust controller. And Mr. Davis said that he would utilize that. Our question though is if it isn't in use, who is going to pay for the vet bills or dust when livestock get respiratory issues? We have cattle lots on both sides of that gravel road as well as down at our location. With that dust control, who's going to maintain our clean farm equipment and vehicles? Because they do have agents that can cause rust and such in vehicles. And if there is excessive dust, what about our crops? Our farms and acreages were here first, not this proposal. We live on these farms for our livelihood and for our family farms to flourish. We don't want these above concerns to come true, nor do we want it to come true for our neighbors as well. I ask that you not allow this proposal to occur unless owner builds his own road across his own land, and that's the map that I show you. He mentioned on the map, onto the east of this, it's his Joe Davis Trust, I believe. I tell my students, I teach at STSU, I tell my students, don't come to me with complaints unless you have a potential solution. And so this is the potential solution I see for this, is to build a road to the east of this gravel pit. It would go one mile to the east and it would hit a highway. That road that they would build would not, there is no acreages, there's no children or anything near that.
You have one minute, ma'am.
Thank you. In regards to this, it is a liability issue that is only going to impact the owner but anyone who's been given approval to this initial proposal. The question isn't if, the question isn't if something's going to happen to someone or something, the question is when is it going to happen? Because the gravel roads, as we know, are not safe when we travel on them and when we have little ones out there playing. My mother-in-law put a great analogy to this. We were a calm pond, and then when you throw a small pebble into it, ripples affect. And this is what's happening here. The calm pond, we're throwing a pebble into this and the ripples are affecting all neighbors and they're affecting them all directions, north, south, west, and east. The problem is, is that the ripple is not going to end. I believe that is it. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions for me?
Your time is up, so we are good there. Thank you. All right, anyone else, opponents, same deal? Please come on up and state your name and your comments. Again, limited to five minutes and we will give you a one-minute warning as well.
My name is Dale Bowne. My concerns are the roads, how they're going to police, them getting taken care of, how they're going to police the 20% going north or going south out of there and it's 20%. They're going to go out of there like a spider. They're going to go every direction there is out of there with gravel. Another thing that happens with gravel pits, these contractors come in from out of town, come to this job site, which they did to ours. They don't know where they're at. They go east of Brookings and they come in from the east yet. They miss a place. They don't know what they're doing. So they're driving these roads that they're not familiar with. And it's, it's not a good deal. But there's hope for that thing going north, but how are we going to police it? And how are they going to, basically, these guys are saying they're going to take care of all the roads on the southern or the west and the northern part of the township. That's a big, big commitment. And who is going to police it? Who's going to do it? Do the empty trucks come back the same way? Or do we have to have them come just any way they can get there? That's what I'm afraid of. We need to have the empty trucks come back the way they went out. That road is delegated from, that's my concerns. I don't think I'm out of line on this. I'm the guy that wrote the estimate on how much gravel is going to be used and I don't think I missed it too far. And there's a lot of use for gravel. But that's my concerns. Thank you. Any questions?
Oh, I'm Brett Knudsen. I'm like on Alton Township Board with Tom Davis and Jim Bauer. The first time I heard about this is from Candy Zimmerman that lives on the dead end road north of Roland Colony. She's like, was upset, they're going to put a gravel pit up there. So a couple of days later, then Tom calls me, Sturzinger. He wants like a maintenance agreement for the road. So I called Tom Davis to see if it's going on. He goes, yeah, we're going to put a gravel pit up there, that's our plan. So that's how I heard about it, you know? And when I thought about it after talking to this neighbors, I'm thinking like Mary Bowne said, they should like make their own road going east to the county blacktop road. That'd be their own road, that'd be the only maintenance they have to do. They don't, nothing on the town, you know, the township roads. Just it'd be the county road, the blacktop. But Tom Davis told me that's going to cost too much. But, but it could be done, like driving past Lindy Dairy today, going east. There's two miles or it's hilly. This is all, there's the last half mile is kind of hilly going east, but it can be done. And then I heard too, they're going down 480, all the way to Highway 14. And then just today, I heard they want to turn on the county road and go towards Bushnell, that two miles there, so... I'm thinking like the people on the edge of Bushnell, they won't be very happy about that, so, you know? But I don't have no trouble, you know, with the gravel pit for, I don't think. You can ask the rest of the people what they think. If they make the gravel pit and go east on their own private road, that'd probably be the best solution. So that's what all I have to say about this, I think. If you have some questions, let me know. Anything else? Yeah, there are, Jordan Louie has kids on 480th. And if you turn and go towards Bushnell, there's like kids on the street right there, but Bushnell, they're always in the driveway, so just something to think about.
All right, thank you. Any other opponents in the audience?
Good evening. I'm Paul Johnson and I have a residential property at 21074 480th, which is just about a quarter mile north of 211th. And it's approximately 2.4 air mile south-southwest of the proposed mine site, if you can believe what's on Google Earth. what's on Google Earth. Been there for about 20 years. Thoughts are a little mixed right now after Mr. Davis's amendments to what was in the application as to what he claims will be happening and what promises he's making in terms of adjustments. I had three major points that I wanted to make, the first of which was mitigated by Mr. Davis, already recusing himself from the deliberations on this, but I'm still a little concerned about his relationship with the board members, the commission members, and other people that have influence here as to how decisions might be made. Second item has to do with the structural integrity of 480th Avenue between 210th and US Highway 14. It presently lacks structural integrity to handle heavy truck, truck traffic beyond its present use, can barely handle what's there now. Already, the road lacks the integrity to handle truck use during wet conditions, as has already been admitted to by the applicant. Already, the road becomes damaged, often severely, with the present use of the road by trucks hauling livestock and, and other items. Already, the road crossings and streams are poorly engineered and constructed to handle flood conditions and have a history of washing out during flood conditions. So it would be interesting to see what the county is willing to pay in order to bulk that up, as well as widen the road in order to handle the two-lane traffic that will be necessary on that road. And so that without major restructuring and unacceptable costs to the township and the county, the section of 480th Avenue between 210th and US Highway 14 simply lacks the structural integrity to support increased truck traffic at any time of the year. So I'm really interested in this proposal that this pending company has in terms of rebuilding the road to actually adequately handle what they propose even with a 20% used as proposed. The truck traffic, and item three is that the truck traffic on 480th as proposed will produce imminent safety, health, and pollution effects for residents, crops, livestock, pets, and farm and residential equipment, mostly due to the dust and to the toxic materials that are already in the road and will be laid down upon the road with increased traffic. Already, truck and car traffic on the road produce considerable dense and voluminous clouds of dangerous and toxic dust that roll through properties for hundreds of feet either side of the road, even under wind conditions that might normally be considered for mitigation. An increase, and since the prevailing winds out there from the, from the northwest and the west, that means pretty much every billow of dust will roll into our property. An increase in traffic as proposed will produce magnitudes more noise, garbage as thrown out by the drivers, and dust and toxic particulates beyond our abilities to mitigate their effects. Therefore, my wife, Damasha Johnson, and I are concerned about the dust and other pollutants that will affect our respiratory systems and quality of life. We do have a family member with four legs, 18 pounds, and also concerned about his health and welfare when faced with imminent hazards such as increased truck traffic. In sum, Damasha and I oppose the proposed use of 480th Avenue between 210th Street and US Highway 14 for increased truck traffic to be unwise from the engineering perspective, unmanageable without overdue costs due to the poor structural integrity of the road bed and stream crossings, the self-evident negative impact on land values and the self-evident development of hazardous living conditions. Such living conditions shall constitute elder abuse to us and the conditional use application presents a callous disregard for the welfare of residents, crops, livestock, pets, and farm residential equipment of 480th Avenue, of which I am one of at least four residents on that section of road. Thank you. Questions?
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Opponents?
I'm Kurt Wees. I live between 211 and Highway 14 on 480th Avenue. I've been there since 1947, and I'm opposed to the truck traffic going by that road. But if you do approve this thing, you can probably put some limits on them. Maybe they should put up a bond so that they destroy the road, they fix it. Because these roads were made for horses and muggies, and today, the base of that road is still the same. And when you're going to pull a bunch of trucks out of them, they're just not going to stand up. Or if that doesn't work, maybe you can give the road back to the county. County's taking over other roads in the township and in the county, and they can maintain that road. So that's a lie. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Wees.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dan Losey. I live at 20973 482nd Avenue. It's a couple of miles southeast as the crow flies. I, I don't want to characterize myself as an opponent. I think we need the pit. I think that's, everybody would probably agree in this room that we could use a gravel pit. I, I do think that some, an investment for Tom and his brothers and everybody that's involved with that mining, a 30-year investment is worth building a road across their property. They have a private road. They can build it to withstand the kind of traffic that it's going to have, and it's going to have a lot. We'll never be able to police who goes north and who goes south. I mean, you just wish in one hand and see what you get in the other hand. Those trucks are going to go wherever they want. You're not going to be able to control that. But if it is a private road into the mine, complete control. It'll, it'll be some money upfront, but it will be well worth it in trying to mitigate all this other business that they're going to be trying to mitigate. The revenue from that mine will be a lot of money. 30 years, you're probably talking millions. It sure as hell would be worth a couple hundred thousand bucks to make a decent road across the Davis property. I think, I think Tom's idea is good if you could tell me that 80% are going north. My grandkids live going south. And I just don't see that as a fair trade. Thank you. That's all I have.
Anyone else in the audience?
I'm Lawrence Swift with the Roland Colony, representing 10 families. And we do have all the same concerns all the other neighbors have. We are not directly affected by the 480th Avenue like a lot of our neighbors are, but we are just off to the east. And we do use that intersection there straight west quite a bit. I'm very concerned, it's going to be very hazardous in the springtime planting and harvest. And Dale Bowen made the comment, when gravel trucks go, gravel trucks come back, they can come in from any direction. And we're just a mile to the east. We have our own private school. Our kids are out there all the time. We're crossing the road. We got a big garden to the south. And if gravel trucks fly up and down the road like that, it's, it's a very, very, very dangerous situation. I agree with Mr. Dan Losey, what he said about building a road to the east over to the highway pave. I think it would be well worth it, like you said, years and years and years. And I think for everybody's interest, whatever I've heard today, I think that would be the best solution. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Swift.
Hi, Christina Wesley. I live 21035 41st Avenue, just south of the Roland Colony. My concern is with the Elton School District. My kids, my nieces and nephews, their bus route goes through there, and there's roads that they might have to take minimums road, minimum maintenance road to get around for their bus route. They do go on the county pavement and they do come to, from the west on 48th, 80th to drop my kids off and my nephew. And my concern is the safety of the bus that will be coming in the morning and in the evening with all the trucks driving by. And also, when the trucks do go to the south on 48th to Highway 14, that is kind of a blind corner to the east. When you look to the east, it is a slight hill for the traffic that is coming down 14 to the westbound. And then also, my other concern is the maintenance is how is that, our roads are not that great right now, the way it is. And I just, I don't know if I see the upkeep on that being taken care of very well with all the traffic. And another thing I do agree with, if it's going to be 30 years or so, agree to see them take the road out to the east and down that county road, even though the bus does travel there. But my opinion, I think that would be the safest option to go straight east, and then you can go south and north from the pavement. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Wesley. Anyone else in the audience?
I'm John, but I live out by Roland Colony. And Mary Bowen said it very well on everything she said. There's a lot going on in a pit. There are, like Dale said, there's stray trucks, you don't know where they're at, they're coming, they're going. They take routes that aren't dedicated to the pit. And I hate to give them credit, but I will. Dan Losey has a very good plan. Send the trucks east on their property, build their own road, do what they want, enter a county, Brookings County, maintain road where everybody knows where to, when to stop, and that'd be the cheapest option. And I have a question on the exploration. What does exploration mean on your permit?
We can talk about that when we get to our section, but we will definitely make that a point to address that question.
Okay. And who do we contact if we have problems with trucks continually sneaking in and out of the pit?
We'll make sure to address that as well.
And are we hauling gravel through Alton Township into neighboring township? Sometimes it's impossible not to, but it needs to be addressed. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Charlene Bowen, and I just have one thing to talk about. When they're talking about the road and township roads, and I don't know how many of you have gone down them, probably all of you live on them. Those roads on township roads are not meant to be meeting gravel trucks coming and going. I don't care if you're going a mile or two miles. We have farm equipment out there, we have children out there, we have cars that are trying to go think places. But when you try to make two trucks see each other, it just doesn't work. These, there's steep ditches, there's water in these ditches because our last two years have been unbelievably with rain. So the township roads are not good. And then you're going to put this much tonnage on them and everything else. And now they talked about, okay, you're going to grade that hill over there. You're talking about another township. Are they incurring that cost with them? Are they sharing the cost with them? Those questions need to be asked too. Who is paying for this? I think the, the best solution would be to, to let them go through their own land, get to a, to the tarred road, and do it that way. Our township roads are not meant to have this much traffic on them. Thank you very much.
If you have more comments, please come up to the front, restate your name and your comments.
I'm Brett Knudsen. Just 480th Avenue from where the driveway, if they go west, the mile and a half going south is minimum maintenance road. But the first half mile's not really that bad of a road, but the next mile is, that's, well, it's gravel road. It's minimum maintenance because we don't plow it and we have to be signed that way. And I've known, two trucks have tipped over there. Like one was on silage and one, like a few years ago, Roland Colony, tipped a semi over the corn there too. So that road's not a good road at all. When trucks meet, one has to pull off in the grass and stop, the empty one does. So a full truck can keep coming by, so. So anyway, that road needs a lot of work and it's going to be like the haul road, but anyway, thanks.
All right. Anyone else from the audience? Want to make sure everybody gets a turn that needs one. All right. So not hearing anything else on that with the public side of things. We're going to close the public hearing. And we'll go back to the board for discussion here. And let's see here, keep in mind, we are just on, or excuse me, we are just on item number nine. So with that, I did write down some comments that we'll have the applicant probably come back up and address. Let's see, so, so far, kind of what I'm hearing is a lot of the roads, we had some exploration of minerals, what that means, which we'll get to. Contacting for problems, which we'll talk about. Neighboring townships, whether or not they should have their own road. They do have a haul agreement, as we've discussed several times in the public portion of the meeting as well. And let's see, the 80/20, I think that was kind of something that we want them to address a little bit more. 35 mile an hour enforcement. So that was my notes. Anything else that we want to talk about amongst ourselves?
Yeah, I would like to explore the possibility in establishing a designated route.
Designated route? Which I guess we kind of had already talked a little bit about, but.
Well, it sounded like though that the major concern of everybody was that they didn't know where the trucks were going to be at any given point in time. And at least if there was a designated route, they would have expectations of meeting trucks in that area. Plus, it would minimize the roads that would have to be maintained.
Which they did kind of talk about already in the very beginning, but yeah, we can, we can have the applicant clarify some things if that's what we need to do. Anything else from the board?
There's a lot of things here that, that are on the surface of this that point to mitigation rules that need to be put in place. As far as road agreements, we don't have. Obviously, haul agreements can be established and haul agreements can not be established if they're. haul agreements can be established, and haul agreements can not be established if their townships decide they don't want them. I could tell you from a county perspective, obviously, we need gravel. And so does, so does the city. They've tightened up their specs on gravel, and it's not being met, and it is a problem. But I can also tell you that township roads are in terrible condition. This last year, we had requests from townships for additional funding to help with the soft roads we have this year. Everything indicates to me that we're going to have the same problem next spring. And we may have that problem for a number of springs to come. So there's going to be a lot of maintenance on township roads, not just in this area, but all over the county. None of these township roads were built for heavy traffic. I heard that tonight. It was all built for horse and buggy. It may have been upgraded a little bit since then, but there's a lot of soft spots. I live on a, I actually live on a gravel road, one of the, one of two in the city of Brookings that I actually live on. And it had so many soft spots, and it's only an eighth of a mile. My son's the street superintendent, and it took me forever to get him to gravel it and get a little dust control on it. When we got the dust control, obviously, my car became a mess, and so did my garage, but it was better than having the dust. So I sympathize with those people who travel those roads in the conditions that they're in. The cost and the expense to the townships to maintain those roads is getting to be a real burden on townships, and I agree. But you also need gravel to fix those roads. I don't know that there's the funding to fix all those roads around that area. I do agree that you can tell a truck driver, this is a designated route, and they probably won't follow it. They'll do whatever they want, or whatever they think they may want. You're also going to have some issues with enforcement, and I agree with that. We can't have the sheriff's department setting out their invoicing and agreement to move somewhere because we don't have a law specifically stating that they can't. We just have an agreement. And so you're going to have to self-police it. And that's not easy, obviously. It doesn't work. So the suggestion that Mr. Davis explores the possibility to move the private entrance over to the east is a valid one. It may not be valid once the expenses, it'll probably be, I would guess, a lot higher, $200,000 to construct that road. And I don't know, Tom, if you've done any research on that. It may be that the family doesn't want to go through there. I mean, that's a possibility, too, but that's a decision that you have to make as a business owner. But have you gotten any estimates on what it would cost to place a road to the east? I'd like that answered.
All right. So we'll have the applicant come back up if Mr. Bartley's done.
It may not be done, but there's the questions that I have, and I would like this one answered.
Well, first of all, a road on our own private property across there would be too expensive. And firstly, there's some gullies and stuff across there that you'd have to spend a lot of money getting across to get to the county road. Because we border the Rowland Colony, the full two miles there to the south. And there's some waterways, like I said, across there. We do have, Mary Bowen suggested, or was wondering about the cost. We are going to give up our whole year's royalty, basically, to fix that road going north on 480th Avenue, that hill, and the road going, the rest of the road going to the corner by the, what they call the Lindy Dairy Corner now. And the county highway superintendent has given us a blessing to use the county roads either direction.
We don't have any of that documentation, so I guess...
Was that in writing?
It's not in writing. We met with him on Friday, last Friday, for two hours.
But at this point, it's hearsay to us because we have no documentation to that effect. We'd have to have that documentation to move forward to, you know, he's not here to present that information, so.
We asked him to come and speak, but he said that if he came and speak, he'd have to come and speak for everybody who wanted to do something on a county road.
Yeah. That's a fact.
That's a fact. I understand that.
All right. So going back, you still haven't told me, have you estimated the cost of going to the east on a, yeah, okay, you got it. You're going to have to have some culverts, possibly a bridge or two, and some road construction. I know it's not cheap. I know it's very expensive. It's a lot more than the $200,000 somebody gave up.
Just, just for example, to fix that hill, the cost is...
I'm not talking about the hill, I'm talking about a road to the east.
Yes, I know. But I'm using this as an example. Just to pull that hill down is going to be $35,000.
I understand. That's fine. But what does it cost to go to the east?
Well, we're talking...
Ballpark.
A mile and a half, I'm guessing would cost $250,000 or $350,000.
I think you're light if you're going to have to put in culverts and bridges or anything like that. But even at that expense, I don't think it's exorbitant to expect that the townships will have a higher expense over a 30-year period to maintain those roads for that type of traffic. And that's the part that concerns me the most, is putting a burden on the townships at this particular time is difficult for me to do that, simply because of the soft roads. And I don't think that's going to go away in the near future. I really don't. I wish it would. I wish we'd have four dry years, but then...
I'm fully aware. I've been on the township board for 35 years.
For you guys to maintain those roads and keep them up under a road haul agreement, any idea what expenses those would cost?
I'm guessing if we go south with loads and we fix the road, like Tom and I have talked, I expect to, you know, until the roads get firm and everything, it's going to cost us over 100 loads of gravel.
Which means, I have no idea what a load of gravel costs. I'm sorry.
Is generally, you know, 26 tons at $6.
Okay. But you still have the application, the grading, the widening of the road, if necessary. I guess what I'm after tonight, in all honesty, is, Tom, is I think we're premature in an agreement to this without some further facts and numbers to prove your case. One is, what's the expense and hardship, hardship is not to be considered by the board in a variance like this. And the hardship, obviously, is you'd have to construct your own road, and it's a high cost. We don't know what that cost is, and you haven't given me a figure that, because you haven't done the research, obviously. We've got some issues with costs for township maintenance on roads for a 30-year period. We've got some costs with dust control.
I'm agreeable to 100% of the traffic going north if that's required. And I don't know if the, if one of the Sherman Township Board members called the zoning office today. He told me he was going to. I texted him the zoning board's number to give a verbal saying that we had agreed to the road maintenance and absorbing the cost to pull in the hill down. And what we were going to get from Sherman, or if this goes through, if we were going to get from Sherman Township was, they were going to pay to have the gravel replaced on the hill. And then we were going to fix the rest of the road to the county road to the north.
And again, it just, to me, there's just a little too many questions that are unanswered in the hardship aspect of this. And maybe it's going to take some more work. I don't know. I would like to see more answers than I can get tonight to approve it. Road haul agreements in place, structure of those agreements agreeable by everybody, whether you can get those agreements. I hate to give a permit, and we can't get those agreements, make it subjective to those agreements. We can do that, but at the same time, it'd be easier, I think, to get those agreements in place before, or at least have...
It's too bad on my part that the Sherman Township fellow did not call the zoning office today. He was on the road on his way to Millbank, South Dakota.
Is that the only, is that the only road agreement you needed, Sherman? You need Alton Township also?
Well, we would need, we would need an agreement for Alton Township for a half a mile. If we make 100% of it, go north.
But we don't have that road haul agreement?
No.
That's, my concern is...
It was my understanding in the beginning, when I talked to Richard, that a verbal would be fine at the time. Am I mistaken with what you told me?
We did receive comment today from Sherman Township on the phone, a verbal agreement. They would be working on that. But yes, if you have verbal agreement in place, then you get the written fact, but nothing should change between the verbal and the written. We need to have that so we can have it on file for that.
Kind of what I'm hearing is, it sounds like we, and I actually agree as well...
I'm just speaking for myself. I mean, those guys have some questions. I just, I needed to get those out, Tom. So if you had answers, we could hear them.
And if we would like, we can definitely table this to next meeting, and maybe we do want to see that before we do any type of commitment, I guess. Another option is for time, you know, if we maybe even want to say, okay, maybe this is conditional for five years or 10 years, or if we want to kind of talk about maybe a little bit more of the roads, that might be something that we need to do. But it is definitely, I mean, like it was stated, gravel is needed. And the argument, it's not in my backyard, is not necessarily valid. And so a lot of this, like dust and stuff like that, is going to happen, whether it be where it is or elsewhere. That's not what we're talking about. It's more just making sure that there's not an added expense, is really where we're going right now. To, to the county and the townships is obviously a big concern of ours. So what else do some of the other board members have to say on some of that? You know, maybe, do we want some more research on some other things? I know the audience had some other questions about enforcement of this 35 mile an hour agreement, I guess, or speed limit. I'm not sure the legal aspects of that, or if we can. Do you have anything to say on that, Richard?
The township would probably have to set the speed limit on there to regulate that, and the enforcement would be up to the sheriff's office.
Okay, so township, that's probably something else that we would want to see. And then...
Can I point out that it's kind of a unique situation? I'm the chairman of the township board this year.
And then as for, like, I know there's some other things about the legal aspects of something were to happen, that's kind of also irrelevant. In the aspect that, if, I mean, it could go with, you know, if something happened in somebody else's lawn, and, you know, it was a friend over, or something like that. So that's not really something. I know that was brought up, though. Some of the flood conditions, which, again, would probably be addressed in some of the agreements and hauling. Building a road, again, that might be something that maybe we just need to see in writing, whatever we want to go with that.
Maybe Mr. Sturzinger here would have a better idea of what the cost of a road would be.
Exploration of minerals, I know that was another question brought up. All that means is, it's a fancy word for mining, exploration, also known as, you know, a lot of, like, digging and gravel pits is really what it is. So the other one was, yeah, just kind of a designated route, which, again, I think would be adjusted, addressed in that agreement, which, again, we want to see in writing. So is there anything else I missed there, Richard?
No, just, the exploration is, if they wanted a permit, or a company wanted to commit to see if there was another type of mineral in that property, that they would be looking for, to see if it would be adequate amount there to mine, is what the mineral exploration part is. But it's all in one, one conditional use on there. So on that. And the other part would be, like I said, you had the question on who to call if there was a problem. Start first with the operator, then check with, then would be the sheriff's office as far as first road violations or speed violations. As far as for gravel going to other townships, that's entirely up to the operator, who gets the gravel where it's going. You know, if they need gravel, they're going to sell it to them. So you really can't regulate who they sell the product to, if it needs to go to neighboring township, and that's where the need is.
Yeah, look close to their ordinance.
Yes, thank you.
I've been on this board for a lot of years, and I think there is a part where we don't look, we don't go out on these, these light ground, light roads. We don't go out on these light roads with a heavy, with heavy ground, with heavy equipment. We go out on, on, on good roads. Am I right?
Yeah, I was going to comment about that. When we talk about putting these CAFOs in, and when they talk about where to build them, they encourage them to build them all on the county roads, just mainly because of the truck traffic. This is going to be far, far more traffic than probably as much traffic as all the CAFOs in the county put together.
Same with, same with, with gravel, gravel pits and mining ground, mining areas.
We've always encouraged them to be on the county roads.
Yeah, yes. On covered roads. Yeah. That's what I thought, after all these years on the board. We want them on covered roads, right? I thought that's what we were talking about.
Right. Yep. And we were estimating roughly eight and a half loads. I believe that was a day.
Per day, if we went south.
If you went south, okay.
That's the 20%.
That's per day per truck, right?
You've still got the 80% going north.
And that's where we had a verbal agreement with Sherman Township to go up that maintenance road, where nobody lives on that road. We'd be a half a mile in Alton Township, and a mile in Sherman Township till we got to a county road, County Road 8 in Brookings County.
But this year, this year, I did not allow my, my farm, I did not allow us to take our trucks out in March, April, and May. We were asked to bring corn down to, to haul corn out to their place because we were, sorry, I can't see it right.
Yep. It's a lot of, a lot of maintaining, and especially during those soft times and stuff like that. That's where we really got to watch some of the roads. And again, budgets is where it kind of comes down to as well.
Yeah. Not to interject, but I understand, you know, I, I had to take care of the roads this summer, you know.
So it sounds like, long story short, though, we just kind of need some answers, some more answers as to some, and an agreement. We do want to see it. It sounds like it would probably be added to the conditions, correct me if I'm wrong, that we would want to see it on a blacktop road, definitely. And again, as for going forward with maintenance and stuff like that.
And one, you know, one reason we want to, you know, went north was for the safety of the children. And two, when we hit the county road, there's, there's, you know, the line of sight there is pretty good. And then when we would hit the Bushnell White Tar Road, two miles north, we would be okay.
Okay. So I think that's a consensus, is we just want to see a little bit more of those two things. So...
Well, I'm willing to take up tabling the...
Okay. I think that's what's, what I'm kind of hearing from the rest of the board. Is that correct?
I'll make a motion to table until the next meeting.
Second.
All right. Motion by Bartley, and second by Mr. McHugh. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. And on to agenda, item number 10. So this is 2020, conditional use 002. Thomas A. Davis has made an application, 2020, conditional use 002, to the Brookings County Board of Adjustment for the Conditional Use, Article 11, Section 11.01a, Agricultural District Conditional Use Permit Number 5A. Rock crushers, the property is described as the east half of the northeast quarter, of the southwest quarter of the northeast quarter, of the southeast quarter, northwest quarter of Section 4, Township 110 North Range, 48 West in Alton Township. So this is the same property that we were just referring to here. So we will call for a motion. So yeah, we'll call for a motion to approve... So yeah, we'll call for a motion to approve this agenda item, or to talk about it.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. McHugh, and a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kleinjohn, and all in favor? Those opposed?
You need to open, you need to, a motion to table this one also. This is a crush.
That's my next motion, to make a motion to table to the next meeting.
Yep, thank you, perfect. We got that. Mr. Ford, it looks like. Okay, so that one's also second. Okay, and we'll take a vote on the tabling, so, Richard, please call roll. Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Okay, so agenda item number 11. 2020 Conditional Use 003. Jesse Bremel of Coyote Ridge Wind LLC has made an application, 2020 Conditional Zeros, Conditional Use 003 to the Brookings County Board of Adjustment for Conditional Use, Article 11, Section 11.01A, Agricultural District Conditional Use Permit Number 6. Contractors Shops and Yards. The property is described as the northeast quarter of Section 15, Township 111 North Range 48 West in Sherman Township. And call for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. And, Richard, your staff report.
Yes, 2020 Conditional Use Number 3. Coyote Ridge LLC by Jesse Bremel has applied for an agricultural district conditional use number 6 for contractors yard and shop. The contractors yard will be temporary with the anticipated end date of August 31st, 2020. The contractors yard is already in place and was approved in 2018 by Conditional Use Number 21 on September 4th, with an anticipated end date of November 1st, 2019, for the Wind Coyote Ridge Wind Project. And the Coyote Ridge, the project has been delayed due to the weather this year in construction, and the majority of the project has been completed, with all the construction of the towers has been completed. Now it's just the electrical infrastructure and the rest of the cleanup that needs to be done. And it's proposed is to be end, out of there and clean up by August 31st of 2020. It's a 10 acre site located in northwest quarter along 482nd Avenue, right across from the colony up there. On the east side of the 204th Street. And the lay down yard is used for construction trailers, wind tower components, and supplies used during the construction phase of the Coyote Ridge Wind Towers. We visited the site and the township, and they do have a road agreement. Public notices were published in the Brookings Register on December 24th and 31st, 2019, and in the white Tri-City Star on December 19th, 2019, and January 2nd of 2020. Letters were sent to the adjoining landowners, Sherman Township Chairman and Clerk, and the Brookings County Highway Department. This is an existing site, it's been there since September of 2018. Just looking for a renewal for eight months to them to complete the project, so. Here's their conditional use application. This is the beacon map showing the area at the corner of 42nd and 204th Street, right there. It's the aerial map also on the beacon map. This is just looking at it from the south, or looking, from the north looking south at 204th Street, the existing buildings and parking lot there. This is the south driveway and entrance right there, equipment storage right there. And I believe there's a representative from Wanzig's here this evening that would, will be coming up if there's anything else to say, so. That's what they want, is to extend the lay down yard to get the project completed that was delayed due to weather, and that's all that I have.
All right.
My name is Kobe Stiles, I'm the project manager for Wanzig Construction. I'm here to represent the interests of Avengrid for Jesse Bremel. If anybody has any questions.
Okay, so thank you for the staff reports, and I guess we'll start out here. Why don't you kind of state your case, what you're doing here?
Well, this is a request, request for an extension of an existing permit between excessive snow, excessive rain, wind events. But a thunderstorm came through the 22nd of October and did damage to some assembled wind tower rotors that were built on the ground. We spent month and a half, two months getting them repaired, so we could finish the project. We're behind. We just need to extend the permit so that we can maintain our yard there. And for spring reclaim activities, that's all that's left to do. And then we'd be out of there by July, August.
Okay. We'll open it up for discussion with the board here. Any thoughts on this, straightforward?
I don't see any problem with it. I go by there all the time, or I'm up there to the Norfeld Hutterite Colony all the time, and they really haven't caused any problems.
If there hasn't been any problems, as far as complaints or, you know, problems with people going on and off the road or anything like that, I don't see any problem with it.
The line of sight there is really well.
Right.
I, I know what you dealt with, you know, that road from between there and where the tar road starts there on 207 got just horrible this spring. Got to where you couldn't even hardly drive a pickup up and down there.
Right.
So.
Yeah, we'll continue in this, once the spring starts up, we'll continue road maintenance, dust control, all the things that we did the past year.
A few times I stopped in there because they had a piece of machinery or something parked in one of our driveways during a rain event or something, and they came right over and moved it and everything. They've been good to work with.
Any other discussion? Seems pretty straightforward. All right, close the discussion with the board and open to the public. All right, any proponents? Seeing none, opponents? All right, and we'll close the public portion of the meeting, or of the hearing, excuse me, and we'll go back to the board. Any other discussion?
What was the end date? On, what is the end, new end date?
October, or August 31st, 2020.
I'm really sure that's enough time for him, or do we want to put a 30 days after contingency?
You can move it out to the end of the year, but this, there, we're adequate with that, and they could extend 30 days ahead of time, come in and ask for an extension of that if they would like. But if you want to move it to December 31st, or whatever date you want, to give them adequate time, is entirely up to your discretion.
Nothing says we're not gonna get eight feet of snow and screw up the whole year again this year, so.
And we can discuss that during the findings of facts.
Okay. Anything else? Maybe we'll bring that up, as long as everybody's good with that. I don't see any problems with it, but we'll bring it up in findings of fact. Okay? Hearing no more public, or excuse me, hearing no more board discussion, we'll go to Richard for the findings of the facts.
Yes, this is basically the same findings with, that was approved in 2018 with a couple items that were removed, because there's no longer the cement plant there, and the bases are poured, so those items were removed from, from this. But we'll go through this and read it. Application for a conditional use permit having been filed with the Brookings County Zoning Commission, acting as a Brookings County Board of Adjustment. Copy of the application being attached here, too. Such application being made by Jesse Bremel for Coyote Ridge Wind LLC regarding the following real property, northeast 1/4 of Section 15, Township 111 North Range 48 West, Sherman Township. After due notice, a public hearing have been held on the application on the 7th day of January, 2020. Number 1, the Brookings County Board of Adjustment hereby finding that it is empowered to grant such a conditional use permit on the following sections of the Brookings County zoning ordinance. Article 11, Section 1101A, Agricultural District Conditional Use Permit Number 6, Contractors Yard and Shop. Further finding that the granting of the conditional use will not adversely affect the public interest. Number 2, the Brookings County Board of Adjustment further finds and certifies that the following specific rules governing the conditional use requested have been complied with. Number 3, the Brookings County Board of Adjustment further finds that satisfactory provisions and arrangements have been made concerning the following where applicable. A, entrance and exit to the property and proposed structure within, with particular reference to the automotive and pedestrian safety, convenience, traffic flow and control, and access in case of fire or catastrophe. Access will be after 40 second, be off 482nd Avenue and 204th Street. B, off street parking loading areas were required with particular attention to the items on A above with economic noise, glare, and other effects of the special exception on adjoining properties and properties generally in the district. No on-street parking. C, utilities, refuge, and service areas with reference to locations, availability, and compatibility. Must use traffic service for garbage and refuse. D, screening and buffering, none stated. E, signs if any, proposed exterior lighting with reference to glare, traffic safety, traffic safety, economic effect, and compatibility and harmony with properties in the district. 16 square foot line allowed, 16 square foot sign allowed, and any required safety and regulatory signs. F, required yards and other open spaces, none stated. G, meets the comprehensive plan of the agricultural district. Number 4, the Brookings County Board of Adjustment further determines and conditions as conditional use permit upon the following additional special conditions or safeguards. A, building permit required for office trailers. Office trailers and portable toilets must be anchored down, abide by all traffic laws, dust control onsite, and haul roads as needed. Once project is completed, area must be cleared and returned to the original condition and use. The Brookings County Board of Adjustment by at least two-thirds vote of its full membership hereby grants petitioner a conditional use permit for the above described real property as follows. Temporary lay down yard during the construction of the Coyote Ridge Wind LLC, expiring... What date would you like me to put in there?
I would say put December 31st on, and we're gonna hope that we have a decent year, and he's out of there in June.
Yep. And then, yeah, if needed, an extension will be addressed.
This conditional use permit is specifically conditioned upon initial and continued compliance with all the requirements, conditions, and three and four above, and upon compliance with all applicable, applicable provisions of the Brookings County Zoning Ordinance. If approved, the Brookings County Zoning Director is authorized to issue any permit required, required building permit for construction consistent with the requirements of this conditional use permit. This conditional use permit is not used within three years of the date granted, it shall be invalid dated the 7th day of January, 2020.
All right. Okay. And when you're ready, Richard, please call for a vote.
McHugh?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Kleinjohn?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Irickson?
Aye.
Jensen?
Yes.
Bartley?
Aye.
Elankwich?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, and so on to agenda item number 12. 2020 Conditional Use 004, Wosnick Construction, Inc., by Tanya Lance, has made an application, 2020 Conditional Use 004 to the Brookings County Board of Adjustment for a Conditional Use, Article 11, Section 11.01A, Agricultural District Conditional Use Permit Number 6, Contractors Shops and Yards. The property is described as the northwest quarter, EXC H-1 in EXCS 338 of west, 850 feet of the north, north 486 feet of south, 824 feet of the west, 305 feet, and north, 236 feet, and south, 574 of east, 74 feet of west, 379 feet. Section 14, Township 111 North Range 49 West in Afton Township. All right. And we will call for a motion.
So moved.
So moved by Davis, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. And, Richard, your staff report, please.
Yes, 2020 CU 004, this is again, an extension of an existing lay down yard by Wanzig Construction, using for, lay down yard for wind tower bases, turbines, blades, et cetera. And this one will be used for the wind farms that will be constructed farther north in Duluth and other counties. This is a centrally located area for them, and the area is there, the approach is all there, so basically we'd like to extend this one also. Like I previously stated, it was previously used, conditional use 2019 CU 003 was approved on March 7th by the board for the construction of the Coyote Ridge Wind Farm. And the lay down yard is used for temporary storage of the wind tower blades, turbines, bases, and component supplies, and equipment, storage to be used during the construction. This will be used for the construction of the T-Tankah Wind Project in Duluth County with an anticipated end date of December 31st, 2020. The applicant has extended their land use agreement with the landowner and the South Dakota Department of Transportation for the driveway extensions. Loaded trailers we park in the designated staging area and store there until they are hauled to the designated, designated site. The lay down yard is located in property noted as a Wilmont gravel pit, which is a mile and a half west of White on South Dakota Highway 30. The east driveway will be used for entering and exit the property. And the applicant has widened the approaches to DOT approval and standards to accommodate the long loads. And it will return back to the original design once the project is completed. And they do have traffic signs located a half mile east and a half mile west of the driveways, alerting the traffic that they may need to stop when loads are entering and exiting the property. And they have extended the lease agreement with the state DOT and the landowner themselves. And public notices were published in the Brookings Register on December 24th and 31st of 2019, and in the white Tri-City Star on December 19th and January 2nd of 2020. Letters were sent to the adjoining landowners, the South Dakota Department of Transportation, and the Afton Township Chairman and Clerk. Here's their applic, conditional use application. This is their, their yard map that they provided. Driveway coming in, they go round to the east side, this is their staging area up here, and come circle around and come back to the, on the west, and exit the same driveway. Here's a larger picture of it. Come in, enter to the east, come up to the flow of the staging area, storage area, exit the area on the west driveway, and back out to the west. Or whichever direction they're going to the, to the site. This new program, I gotta get down here. Apologize for that. This is just a beacon map of the Wilmont gravel pit. You can see the area right here. This is the driveway coming in, this is the staging area. This picture was taken this spring, so this is a current, fairly current picture, so. Come in the driveway here, staging area back around and back out again, so. This is west of the driveway looking to the east, this is a half mile east, west of the driveway, your trucks entering sign or be prepared to stop sign there. This is the driveway going there, this is looking south in the driveway, southeast, I guess, this is the driveway showing the open area. And there is, there was another sign over the hill on the east side of that also with one of these signs alerting for the traffic, so. That's all that I have.
All right. Okay, we will have the applicants come on up, state your name, and a little bit about the, the item here.
Kobe Stiles, again, Wanzig.
Uh, Kobe Stiles, again, Woznick Construction Project Manager. Um, we spent a significant amount of money making improvements to this particular site. Um, we're actually storing some, uh, components, construction components, mats, equipment, and things like that through the winter at this site for the Coyote Rid- Ridge Project, and then we're gonna use it as a staging area for components coming in for the Titacah Wind Project, which is just north and a little bit west of Toronto. Um, just requested the board let us continue to use this for the next year because it's, it's a good central location, it has good access. Um, we've already proven that, you know, we can enter and exit there with no problems, so. That's really all I have, y'all, has any questions?
Okay. Um, we'll open it up for discussion with the board. Um, so this one, do we wanna look at that date as well?
Y'all done hauling the blades, or you gotta, you still got more to haul?
Uh, there's more blades coming for the other project. They're coming in June-ish.
Okay. Nothing else?
One year gonna be enough?
What's that?
Is one year gonna be enough?
Maybe, come on back up. And I thought we were doing this section.
Yeah, and the year will be fine.
Okay. So also twelve thirty-one is kinda what I'm hearing from the board as well? Makes sense to me, okay? I think we kinda covered it on the other one, so that, I believe, should be all the questions, okay? Um, and then opening it up for public, proponents? Do I hear anyone? Come on up, please, state your, nope, okay, it's alright. Um, any opponents? Yep, come on up and state your name, please, and, uh, your comments.
I'm Laverne Jared, I live across the road from that last site. And you guys didn't think there was any problems? You didn't live across the road from it. That highway thirteen nineteen is kinda busy now. When they pull one of their stuff out, there's traffic backed up for a half mile both ways. And the fastest they get out of there is fifteen minutes, and I've seen them take an hour and a half. I can't even get out my own driveway, can't even get silage into the silage pile, and they don't give a shit. One time they shut off the road over by Hendricks for all afternoon, 'cause they're moving a crane across the road. That's a state highway. Nobody else has the right to use it, because when they're doing it, the only ones important is them, the rest of us are just dirt. But you guys all don't think there's a problem up there? And that's a dangerous hill. Well, yeah, they got my driveway blocked off and they're stopping all traffic, you can't even use your own driveway. I know you guys are gonna let them do it anyway, they gotta finish the project, but they could work with the people across the road a little bit nicer. And then those signs they got on the road, all, half you guys farm, how wide your tractors nowadays? Mine's nineteen feet. How do I get off the non-coming traffic when the sign's in the way? You either run over the sign or run over the car or don't take the road. And, and them signs sometimes block your view when you're coming out of the driveway to see if a car's coming, 'cause they're right along the edge of the road. And by the way, the stakes for the signs are still out there, they never even took them down. But there is a problem up there, I just wanna let you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, any other proponents? Opponents? Okay. Um, we'll close the public portion of the meeting, and back to the board, any other discussion?
I know exactly what Laverne's talking about. I've been there many times, and that is, uh, kind of a, it's, it's not a really tall hill, but it's a pretty steep run right off that, right off that, what he's talking about, it's, it's exactly like that, I know.
Uh, do you have any recommendations or something that you think?
I don't know how to recommend, I just don't know how.
Well, and of course, this is kind of a limited timeframe, too.
There, there is an organization that I was gonna mention during my application called South Dakota LTAP. It's an, it's located on the College of South Dakota State University, it's free, you can call them, and they will help you with things like that. I suggest that you contact them and maybe point out some of these problems these two gentlemen have pointed out. I have the number here taped inside my iPad here, if you want it. And see what they have to say, they're funded by the South Dakota Legislature, so they, it's, it's free.
Alright, anything else from the board here? Alright, um, okay, and then, Richard, um, on to you for findings and facts, please.
Yep, I will read the first page and the second page, I'll just highlight, go over and read the highlighted areas, I won't be redundant, read the same document here. Application for conditional use permit having been filed with the Brookings County Zoning Commission, acting as the Brookings County Board of Adjustment, and a copy of the application being attached here to such application made by Tanya Lawrence for Woznick Construction, Inc., regarding the following real property. The northwest one-fourth accept H one and accept the south three hundred thirty-eight feet of the west eight hundred and fifty feet of the north four hundred eighty-six, of the south eight hundred twenty-four feet of the west three hundred and five feet, and the north two hundred thirty-six feet of the south five hundred seventy-four feet of the east seventy-four feet of the west three hundred seventy-nine feet of section fourteen township one eleven north, range forty-nine west, Afton Township. After due notice, public notice, public hearing have been held on the application on the seventh day of January twenty twenty. Number one, the Brookings County Board of Adjustment hereby finding that it is empowered to grant such a conditional use on the following sections of the Brookings County zoning ordinance. Article eleven, Article eleven, Section eleven point oh one, A Agricultural District, Conditional Use number six, contractors' yards and shops. Further finding that granting of the conditional use will not adversely affect the public interest. The Brookings County Board of Adjustment further finds and certifies that the following specific rules governing conditioning, the conditional use have been complied with. Number three, the Brookings County Board of Adjustment further finding that satisfactory provisions and agreeing arrangements have been made concerning the following real property. A, entrance and exits to the property will be off South Dakota Highway thirty. Must abide by South Dakota Department of Transportation Highway access permit and modified access areas to and modified access areas to be returned to the original condition after the completion of the project. B, no on-street parking. C, must use trash, trash or garbage refuge service. D, none stated. E, sixteen square foot sign allowed and any required safety and regulatory signs. F, none stated. G, meets the comprehensive plan for the agricultural district. South Dakota Department Trap for, the Brookings County Board of Adjustment further determines and conditions as conditional use permit upon the following additional specific, special conditions or safeguards. A, South Dakota Department of Transportation Highway approved access permit for South Dakota Highway thirty required. B, modify South Dakota Highway thirty access to be returned to the original design and meet DOT standards once the project is completed. Um, portable toilets must be anchored down, abide by all traffic laws, dust control onsite and haul roads as needed, and once project is completed, the area must be cleared and returned to its original condition and use. The Brookings County Board of Adjustment determines that at least two-thirds vote of its full membership hereby grants the above petitioner a conditional use for the above-described real property. Lay-down yard to be used for tower bases, turbines, turbine blades, related components, and will expire on December thirty first twenty twenty. This conditional use permit is specifically conditioned upon initial and continued compliance with all the requirements in three and four above, and upon compliance with all applicable provisions of the Brookings County zoning ordinance. Brookings, if approved, the Brookings County zoning director is authorized to issue any required building permits for construction consistent with the requirements of this conditional use. This conditional use permit is not used within three years of the date granted, it shall be invalid, dated the seventh day of January twenty twenty.
Alright. And uh, Richard, please call for a vote.
Davis.
Aye.
Nelson.
No.
Kleinjohn.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Jensen.
Yes.
Bartley.
Aye.
McHugh. Elankwich.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Alright, agenda item number thirteen. Um, two zero two zero, conditional use zero zero four, Darrell and Joan Nelson have made an application, two zero two zero, conditional use zero zero five to the Brookings County Board of Adjustment for the, for a conditional use. Article four, district requirements, chapter four point zero three, LP Lake Park District. Section four point zero three, point zero two, conditional uses permit number six, accessory buildings with a sidewall greater than fourteen feet or more than, um, for, than two thousand square feet and used accessory buildings greater than a hundred twenty square feet. Um, the property is described as lot eight, Hafner Knoll Edition in Government Lot Three of Section twenty-two Township, one one two north, range forty-eight, forty-seven west of Lake Hendricks Township. And do I hear a motion to this?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Kleinjohn, and a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Alright, and, uh, Richard, your staff report, please.
Alright, twenty twenty, conditional use number five, Darrell and Joan Nelson have applied for Lake Park District conditional use to build an accessory building uh, forty feet wide and sixty-four feet long with a fourteen-foot sidewall. To be used for storage. The proposed accessory building would be located on a non-lakefront lot and will meet the requirements of twenty, will meet the setback requirements of twenty-five feet from the road, twenty-five feet from the burr property line, and eight feet from the side property lines. Mr. Nelson's lot is located on the south side of Lake Hendricks in Hafner Knoll Edition, across the road from their lake cabin at seven ten South Lake Drive. The lot is one hundred feet wide and two hundred and forty-two feet long. Hafner Knoll Edition was platted in November of nineteen seventy-eight. Public notices were published in the Brookings Register on December twenty-fourth and thirty-first of twenty nineteen and the Hendricks Pioneer on December twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen, and January first, twenty twenty. Letters were sent to the adjoining landowners, Lake Hendricks Township Chairman and Clerk, and the Brookings County Highway Department. This is his conditional use request. And there he has, it could be a twelve-foot or fourteen-foot sidewall, um, he has that variance, or that leeway to go, but he didn't apply for a sixteen-foot or sidewall larger than fourteen-foot, so he has that discretion to build the sidewall, whatever height he wants, up to fourteen feet. Just his, um, site map, his residence is right over here, just kinda kittywampus from the, his back lot, South Lake Hendricks Drive. Be ten feet, he has a position ten feet from the side lot, and it'll be twenty-five feet from the back, forty feet wide, sixty-four feet long. There's his, um, lake cabin right there, this is the lot right here with the dock is sitting. There's snow on this picture right now when we get to it, dock is about the same place, but, long, narrow lot. This is the west property line, the boundaries are marked pretty good, they're all marked east and west side of the property. This is the, the middle of the lot looking south. This is the east boundary here marked over here, it's the other sheds, similar sizes in the background there. This is about the location of where it would be roughly. That's all that I have.
Alright. Um, alright, and looks like we have the applicant here, will you please state your name and a little bit about the request?
Yeah, my name is Darrell Nelson, and my wife is Joan Nelson, and we've bought that, uh, lake property, I think it's six years ago now this summer. But we wanna put up a building for cold storage, like for the pontoon, and we're kinda leaning towards the fourteen-foot high. But the footprint will be the same as Matt Thompson's down the street, about three lots to the west, forty by sixty-four. And, uh, I don't know if Hendricks Lumber sent anything to you guys?
Not yet, no. Nope.
And I got started kinda early, the day we came down was the last day to get in for this meeting, so my drawing wasn't too good. It may be a little farther towards center. Uh, maybe twenty-five feet in that side and from the back, but it'll be something like that, I guess.
Richard, what are the rules for the setbacks and a lot like that?
Pardon?
I was asking Richard there what the rules.
Was, I don't know if Mr. Nelson was finished yet or not.
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just follow whatever the rules are, I got the little book and I'll keep in touch with, it sounds like Richard's the man to talk to, I got his card, so. Try to get started this spring, hopefully.
Alright, um, so anything else you wanna say, or, okay?
Pretty much it, I guess.
Um, then we will open it up to the board, discussion from the board, um, any questions we have amongst ourselves as well as to the applicant?
I'm, I'm sorry I got ahead of myself there.
That's alright, yeah.
Um, I was just going to ask Richard what the rules were for the setbacks to another property line.
Prop, the side setbacks are eight feet, the front and the rear setbacks, we just changed this spring and along with the building size, ours twenty-five feet, front and rear. So, he's, has more than enough room, and will meet the setbacks.
It's approximately a hundred by three hundred feet, the lot, although it's the angle, but I'll comply to whatever the rules are.
I don't know if I've done things right here, um, since, uh, I'm you know, I'm his other brother Darrell.
Yeah, different mother.
Right, right. Different spelling.
Yeah.
Um, so basically kinda the sidewalls and the si- size of the building, um, so just a pontoon is kinda what you're looking at?
Yeah, well, lake toys, I guess, pretty much.
Okay, um.
I got a bobcat and side by side.
Okay.
Golf cart. That'll free up our garage so we can park our cars in there. You know how that is.
Is this your full-time, um, place of living?
No, 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 not, not at this time.
Okay.
I live, or where I'm living, the city's coming in on me, and we're working on a few things there, I might sell that property with my brother-in-law, he has six acres there. And just get the house moved or do something with it and a different phase of life, I guess.
Um, any type of, um, like water or anything like that?
Well, I'd like to put a hydrant out on the corner outside.
Okay, outside, building?
Is what I'd hope, yeah, but not inside.
Drainage?
I wanna line it, I wanna, I was thinking about fourteen-foot for future sale, you know, someday, maybe somebody wanna buy it and had a motorhome they wanna put in there. I don't have one, but, you know, with the air conditioners on top, they gotta be a certain height. So that's why we're kinda leaning towards a fourteen-foot high. But I wanna line it and air condition it and have it ready for heat someday possibly, but not right away, so, still gonna be cold in there, but.
And if I understood correctly, properties around that are also at roughly the fourteen-foot?
Right, there's three other buildings similar in size.
Yep.
Also up there.
Any other questions amongst ourselves for the applicants? Pretty straightforward, I believe, as well. Um, alright, audience, proponents, hearing none, opponents, hearing none, close of public, and back to the board, anything?
Is that what the new, uh, when we get to the new ordinance, will that be forty, four, fourteen feet?
Fourteen.
Yes.
Yes, it'll be fourteen, so this would match the, um.
Okay.
Instead of the eight, right?
Uh, twelve we were at before.
Oh, you're talking about height, I'm surprised.
Yes.
Yeah, kinda something we're working on.
I just need the variance for the size.
I just need the variance for the size, the footprint, yeah.
The sides, or size and size.
40 by 64.
Yep, okay. All right, so hearing no more discussion from the board, we'll have Richard go over the findings of facts.
Here again, I'll read the first page and highlight the second, so. Application for a conditional use permit having been filed with the Brookings County Zoning Commission, acting as a Brookings County Board of Adjustment, copy of the application being attached here, too. Such application being made by Darrell and Joan Nelson regarding the following real property. Lot 8, Hafner Knoll Edition, in Government Lot 3 of Section 22, Township 112 North, Range 47 West, Lake Hendricks Township. After due notice, a public hearing have been held on the application on the 7th day of January 2020. Number one, the Brookings County Board of Adjustment hereby finding that it is empowered to grant such a conditional use on the following sections of the Brookings County zoning ordinance. Article four, District Requirements, Chapter 4.03, LP, Lake Park District, Section 4.03.02, Conditional Use Number Six. Further finding that granting of the conditional use will not adversely affect the public interest. Number two, the Brookings County Board of Adjustment further finds and certifies that the following specific rules governing and conditioning the conditional use requests have been complied with, none stated. Number three, the Brookings County Board of Adjustment further finds that satisfactory provisions and arrangements have been made conserving the following where applicable. A, will use existing driveway on South Lake Hendricks Drive. B, off-street parking and loading areas, none stated. C, utility refuge and service areas, none stated. D, screening and buffering, none stated. E, signs, none stated. F, required yards and other open spaces, none stated. G, comprehensive plan met for the Lake Park District. Number four, the Brookings County Board of Adjustment further determines and conditions this conditional use permit upon the following additional special conditions or safeguards. No sleeping quarters to be constructed in the building at this time, but it is, we can take that out, that really doesn't apply here, because the lot is large enough if you wanted to build that, that was for a previous one. The Brookings County Board of Adjustment by at least two-thirds vote of its full membership hereby grants the above petitioner a conditional use permit for the above-described real property as follows. Build a 40-foot wide by 64-foot long accessory building with a 12-foot, or do you want me to go with 14?
14, please.
Okay. With a 14-foot sidewall on a non-Lakefront lot. This conditional use permit is specifically conditioned upon initial and continued compliance with all the requirements and conditions in three and four above, and upon compliance with all applicable provisions of the Brookings County zoning ordinance. Brookings County, if approved, the Brookings County zoning director is authorized to issue any required building permits for construction consistent with the requirements of this conditional use. This conditional use permit is not used within three years of the date granted, it shall be invalid, dated the 7th day of January 2020.
All right, and, please call or roll for a vote.
Nelson.
Aye.
Kleinjohn.
Aye.
Ford.
Yes.
Erickson.
Aye.
Jensen.
Yes.
Bartley.
Aye.
McHugh.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Yelankwich.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. As long as I don't have a heart attack when I get the estimate, I'll keep, keep going on. You guys have a good night, thanks again.
That's why I only gave you one cookie, so.
Yeah, there you go.
All right, and so on to agenda item number 14. We are at department report.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. FEMA has been in the area, we had two FEMA declarations this year, one from the March-April blizzards, and another one from the September rainfall. Public assistance was authorized for both of them, hopefully the townships are working on that. I know the county's about ready to receive our check for our public assistance from the March blizzards. I don't know how, what the status is on the townships that had the rainfall in September, because they don't come through my office like the other ones did, but I presume that all that's working out well. And we did get individual assistance, and Brookings County received over $400,000 worth of individual assistance. And what this is, is if you, like, if your basement flooded and your foundation got nailed and stuff like that, a lot of that's money to help you restore your residence back to livable conditions. One thing people didn't realize, and we learned a lot from this, if it ever happens again within the next five years before I retire, I'll be much better qualified to do this, now that we learned, learned all this. But you have to be careful, if you got a lake house and it's not your primary residence, you won't get a dime from these people. It has to be your primary residence. But it's amazing, we had, from the September rainfall, we had people in Bruce, White, of course, Lake Campbell area, which is Volga and Brookings, and then Aurora and Elkton, all, all received. Aurora, it looks like it received a bigger hit from anyone else, and then Elkton would be second, and then the Lake Campbell areas. Lake Campbell consists of, part, half of Lake Campbell is in Volga, and the other half is in Brookings zip code, that's why it looks like Volga got hit hard, but it wasn't the city of Volga, it was actually Lake Campbell. And if you, if you're working on your house, and if you've got an old basement that might be leaking or something, if you want help from FEMA, FEMA's in Loews this week, the local Loews over here, and they're there from 8:00 to 6:00, Monday through Friday, and 8:00 to, I want to say 4:00 on Saturday, and they'll help answer any questions you have on mitigation assistance and what it might take to help, help you rebuild your house. One thing they will caution you on is have you stop at the zoning office to make sure you're complying with all building codes. They don't, they don't make new building codes just because they're FEMA, they have, still have to go through our, our local building code, so you'll still be staying registered if you're working on your house, but FEMA can give you some ideas on how to mitigate against future, future damages. And that's all I got, Madam Chair. Luke, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Oh, yes.
Okay, thank God, we dodged the bullet there.
Be careful.
Richard, you have anything?
Just, yeah, hopefully coming up, before too long, we'll get back on the ordinance update within the next, hopefully not too distant future, but that's all that I have. It looks like we're going to have a busy February meeting, so come prepared. 'Tis the season for gravel pits, we'll have two more coming up here, possibly at the February meeting, so, as of now.
And we will start working, but I'm trying to get these road agreements before they come in. We, the verbal part on road agreements, maybe, maybe we better change our focus on that, have them bring something in writing. What's the board's actual thought on that?
I think that's a wonderful idea, I want to see it in writing. I mean.
I thought, you know, just from my perspective tonight, I thought that we had given some variances with the fact, finding in the fact that they get a permit and then bring it in and prove it.
We have in the past, no one, no one's doubting that. We have in the past, but we've also had situations where the township wouldn't give them one. And then what happens? Then it's totally, then it, you know, it comes back to the board, and we had to go through our state's attorney to figure out what we're going to do. I mean, if we gave them a conditional use, and the township won't give them a road agreement, then we're in a catch-22, and that did happen one time.
Well, then that could happen in my application, because, you know, the one spoke against it, if I recuse myself.
No, this isn't directed towards you.
No, I, I understand, I know that.
This is for all conditional uses coming up.
Yeah, I understand that, I'm not, I'm not holding anybody.
Anything, CAFOs, we want to, I would say we want to see that in writing, and.
And that's just what we have to start, I mean, that's part of, that's part of growing and as a zoning board, you know, we've been, I've been here for 2003 is when I started, and we always, we tend to grow as we, as we go along, try to make things better all the time.
If it's right, in writing, there is no, it's pretty black and white.
Although Richard did try to elevate you guys to president and vice president today, we'll, we'll keep you as chairperson and vice-chairperson.
Yes, I noticed. Anyway.
That's all we got, madam.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. And on to agenda item number 16, adjourn. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, sir, we have Mr. McHugh and a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. Meeting adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?